Okay, all right, let's call this April 6 meeting of the Mount Airy Town Council. Let's start with the pledge.
My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Glad to see our Mount Airy flag back.
Yeah, somebody found the Mount Airy flag and returned it, I noticed. Okay. All right, we have no presentations, we have no guest speakers, the mayor is going to present the budget. And his car key.
Good evening, you all will notice the new microphones are really in your face.
Yes.
But you hear much better sound.
It said do not bend or twist, but if I didn't, I would be hitting it constantly.
Okay, my name is Pat Rockenberg, I'm very proud to serve as the mayor of Mount Airy, and this is the town of Mount Airy budget for fiscal year 2016. Once again, I am pleased to present my proposal for the budget of the town of Mount Airy. Our financial picture is strong, our reserves are balanced and have continued to increase. We are moving forward with capital projects, some of which are being funded from the town's reserves that are earmarked for such use. Services have been maintained, all while keeping our tax rate steady, unchanged since fiscal year 2011. Mount Airy has the lowest tax rate of all municipalities in Carroll County and has the lowest tax rate in the state of Maryland as compared to all municipalities of equal or greater populations. Following past practice, this draft was initially compiled by staff working with individual departments, then staff and I made further review and adjustments. The budgets are balanced in both the general and water and sewer fund had sufficient operating revenue to cover operating costs. Any extra went into the capital budgets to help fund capital projects. I am recommending we stay with the same tax rate we've used for previous, for the previous five fiscal years, which is .1695 per hundred of assessed value. This rate is slightly above the constant yield tax rate, which is .1688, which is determined by the state of Maryland. The constant yield tax rate is the tax rate that will yield the town the same dollar amount of real estate tax revenue as the previous fiscal year. Using this method would not provide the town additional revenue for new construction or assessment increases from resales, that's why we're staying with the rate. At this date, it seems as if Mount Airy will not receive $50,000 additional bonus revenue from the state of Maryland in the form of police grant funding for fiscal year 2016. However, the highway user bonus has been included again this year and has been added after the governor's original budget submission. The highway user bonus will be about $240,000, which is 40,000 more than last year. The Maryland Municipal League has been very diligent in lobbying the state legislator, legislator to restore these revenues back to the previous levels, and bonus grants have been received in the last two fiscal years on a year-by-year basis. Highway user revenue and police aid were cut by over $433,000 in fiscal year 2010 and have been a major impact on our budget. We've managed not to raise taxes like many other municipalities, but we're forced to do so, that we're forced to do so. But we have had to fund projects from reserves that were normally covered by highway user grant money, specifically road paving. Reserves will be used to fund capital projects and all are being used for the purposes for which they were intended or set aside for. As always, these reserve funds will not be drawn from the investments accounts unless needed. And everybody knows that historically we do not draw them, at least as much as proposed. Our reserve balance has grown over the past years, recovering from a previous decade of substantial withdrawals for large capital projects, one being this town hall. Our strong reserves are available for emergency use and future capital projects to benefit the town's infrastructure and community. Public safety is the largest non-capital departmental expense in our budget. I think it just recently surpassed recycling, so that's a very large ticket item for us. Carroll County dropped the trooper program and dropped funding for the cost of one half of the trooper that they had previously paid for on behalf of the town. We have seen significant increases in our state trooper program and we expect to pay an additional $90,000 in fiscal year 2016. Next year, we will be taking an overall look at public safety, and I have included $40,000 in this budget as a placeholder for a police chief. In terms of operating budget, expenses were scrutinized and reduced where I felt justified. The capital budgets allow for improvements to our roads, parks, water, sewer systems, and the mandated stormwater management projects associated with the rain tax when they begin. And we have included funding for the design of the flat iron building improvements, the design to be determined by the town council. Please review the accompanying highlights and changes report for more specific information, that will be forwarded at a later date by Charlene, our accountant. Overall, the town of Mount Airy stands financially strong and will continue to produce fiscally responsible budgets, keeping costs down and taking cost-reducing measures whenever possible. We have weathered tough budget times because of this longstanding conservative practice. And it has been by careful planning that we have come through the difficult budget years and are even stronger than when we began. I encourage you to consider the big picture related to the needs of the town as addressed through the budget. As the budget reflects our priorities, we need to ensure we are addressing key issues for our citizens and the community, or at least putting ourselves in a position to better address such needs. We are, we also need to ensure we are effectively planning ahead for the future, and that while we continue to emphasize cost savings, we do not take steps that will increase future costs dramatically. I look forward to working together throughout the budget approval process with the council to present the citizens of Mount Airy with the most efficient and effective budget possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And I will do the ceremonial dropping of the paper.
And I will do the ceremonial going to Walmart to get some reading glasses. Thank you, I know a lot of hard work went into that.
Could, Mr. Mayor, can I have one request for the budget process?
Yes, sir.
Could we, one of the things we talked about last council meeting was to identify a reserve policy, how much money will we keep in reserves for cap, for general fund and for water and sewer? So is part of the process, if I could ask you to have staff come up with what we believe is a good number to make sure we're sound financially and look at, so that way we can identify any excess. For argument's sake, I've heard from some folks that, well, if you've got that much in reserves, maybe you ought to cut taxes even further, something to that effect. But I really think that, that now would be the time to say, by policy, here's what amount of money we're going to have in reserves and then identify whatever left as excess.
We can definitely look at potential failures that could happen to the town. I've already did a layman's evaluation that if everything were to fail at one time, it would cost us approximately $6 million to fix that. We have 13 million in reserves. We can certainly look through that, but as you know, councilman, it'll ultimately be the council's decision to decide which amount of monies are saved in holding reserves for the town of Mount Airy, but we can certainly make a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, we have approval of the minutes.
Peter, I'll make the motion with one change.
All right, is that on the regular minutes or the public hearing minutes?
Public hearing minutes.
Okay. What's your change, and then I'll second it.
It's, it's the second line, Scott King. It says Bob King, Bob King, Scott King.
Yes, you're right.
Well, sometimes we are interchangeable.
Okay, I will second that with, with that one change, that Scott is, is not Bob's son, even though people may think that.
They could think Bob's my son, but that'd be a little weird.
Okay, any discussion?
We're brothers.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved, that's both sets, Debbie. Police report, I don't see anybody here tonight. Fire company report, I don't see anybody here tonight, it's not like the fire company.
No.
I don't like to see that, that makes me wonder if there's an emergency somewhere we don't know about. Community concerns, citizen comments, this is a time we set aside, few minutes, come on up and line up on the wall here and tell us what you want to tell us. And identify yourself, please.
My name is Peggy White, I live at 999 East Ridgeville Boulevard, that's the dead end of East Ridgeville. I am lot number one of Conestoga Heights, and I've lived there since 1981. I don't know any of you all, I think the last time I argued with the town was when Jimmy Fry wanted to rezone Conestoga Heights to commercial or industrial, and somehow, even though I'm the main house in there, the town forgot to send me a notice. So I drug my little babies around and went to all the councilman's houses, and we got it where he had to build houses instead. We put quite a bit of money in three years into the house we bought and didn't want to live in an industrial park.
Are you all the way at the bottom of the hill?
I am.
Okay, all right, I know what you're talking about.
And every day, your town trucks cut across the easement on the corner of my property to go back and check whatever it is you do, and for 30-some years, I've really not had a problem. But my problem since Browning's moved in has increased. The main reason for me being here tonight is because Mr. Fry did not have to quit sidewalks in front of my house when he put them on the rest of Conestoga and halfway up East Ridgeville. Probably was mad at me, I don't know. Anyway, the town didn't make him do it. Now, my son is Scott White, who happens to live on the other side of East Ridgeville Boulevard, he's the only house with sidewalks on that side. When he built a house in 2009, Barney told him, nope, you have to have sidewalks.
That is, going forward, you do, correct?
Yes, and I understand that there is money in this budget somewhere. I've been on the phone with Barney and whoever your code enforcer is about the condition of my apron from the tow trucks. I don't, they have to have an easement, and you all have to have an easement, but you don't have to have 50 feet. I'm, I'm doing something and making that easement smaller, where my driveway is my driveway and your easement is your easement. I would like the sidewalks to come down to the end of my driveway that were never installed. You have equipment coming to put them on the rest of the street. I pay taxes, I don't know why I don't have them, and I feel that I deserve them, and that's why I'm here.
Well, Ken, that would be a streets and roads issue, so.
We'll take a look at it, I don't know your situation, but we'll start to take a look at it.
Okay, I mean, if you have equipment coming.
Barney knows something. I see him waving.
Barney said the town could do nothing for me. I'm sorry, the town could do something.
Sorry, what was the answer?
999 East Ridgeville Boulevard. And like I said, it's never really been an issue, but Mr. Watson, who owns that property, has not done anything to the road. The man tells me he thinks the town who uses the road, and myself, who happens to own the property, should pave it. I'm not paving some man's easement road. I don't think it needs to be as wide as it is, I don't appreciate the fact that when we paved our driveway, we stopped at the end because I didn't know if a sidewalk was coming or where to stop or what to do, so our paver said, stop here. Well, from where you all paved the road last year to where my asphalt stops, my, what I call my apron, just come down there, all of you, please, and see how.
I think I drove in there with Barney last year.
Your, your house is the one that's set way in the back.
Yes, yes. And that is the corner of my property, my property points in that pile of rocks, but those trucks towing tractor trailers.
For Browning, which is back in there, I remember we inspected their property.
My apron has destroyed it this winter. They, what you all call staining on the road, I call mud, you all don't want to drive through mud when you leave your house, either do I. Something needs to be done, and I think extending the sidewalk past my part of the easement where they, and putting a giant pole there, and if you put a stop sign, that would be great too, for them. But anyway, I, I'm tired of fighting with trucks to get out of my driveway, and I'm tired of them messing up what I have already paved by cutting, it, it's an easement, it's not a, okay, drive across Mike and Peggy's driveway. And something needs to be done, I think sidewalks would help.
Well, let's, let's hear what, we obviously, the streets and roads is Ken's department, and Barney knows something, we, we don't know anything, so about this, about the subject.
There's supposed to be a meeting, I'm waiting for a meeting.
Two things from our conversation, first is the sidewalk that was requested, in the sidewalk for East Ridgeville tonight, that is already included, we had the engineer include that.
Thank you.
So that was put in there.
Thank you.
And the second thing is, we talked to a couple of the property owners, Mr. Watkins and Mr. Pank, and they're, they're both in agreement, they'd all like to meet together and, like you had suggested, and just talk about, see what can be done to get them off your property.
Thank you. I mean, I know that you all have to get back there, but for 30 years, it wasn't a problem, the past three, it's been a nightmare.
Sure.
So, I think a sidewalk would help, and I appreciate your time.
So is the answer to that, Barney, that what we have here includes putting a sidewalk there?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you ever want to have a meeting to figure something else out.
We do.
If you have my number.
Yep, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any others, ah, Bill.
I just want to remind, Bill Butts, 103 Church Street and Chair of the Mount Airy Planning Commission. I just want to remind everyone, we're having a municipal election on Monday, May the 4th. This past year, Councilman King and I were very interested in making sure that we continued a tradition in Mount Airy where there was a candidate forum for a municipal election. When we reached out to the Carroll County League of Women Voters, we found out that they just felt they were stretched too thin, they wouldn't be able to do the forums that they had done in the past. So we said, rather than lose that opportunity, let's do one ourselves, let's, let's let the town sponsor it. And we did prior to the council elections last year. We're going to have another candidate forum this year because we have three council seats that are, are up for election, and that forum is going to be on Tuesday, April the 28th. It's a little bit closer to the election than perhaps we would have preferred, but it was the best date in terms of the candidates' availability, the availability of, of town hall, and then also the open production evenings that the Carroll Media Center had available. Carroll Media Center is going to cover that, they'll do a live remote from this, this room. We'll have the forum here, I'll moderate it, and between now and the 28th, we want to encourage Mount Airy residents, if you have a question, if you have a topic that you would like to be asked of all of the candidates, any questions that come in, will be given to all candidates and they'll be asked to respond. Simply send it to me, and my email is billbutts, B-I-L-L-B-U-T-T-S, at hotmail.com. We'll do our best to review those with other questions that we have that are generated here that evening, and those questions will be asked of our candidates. We think this is a practice that is useful and appropriate for our town, we think it's also a benefit to the candidates. So, we encourage you to attend, if you're not able to attend, it will be rebroadcast, it will be streamed live that night, so you could even watch it at home if you can't get down here, and hopefully there will be some replays before the actual election on Monday the 4th.
Thanks, Bill.
All right.
Anyone else? I see. All right, we got one more.
Ed Kirkendall, 202 Oak Street.
Hi, Mr. Kirkendall, I think I sent you some.
Yes, thank you very much.
I sent you a copy of one of these ordinances coming up.
I wanted to thank you for that.
Sure.
It was about the parking. It wasn't quite what I was looking for, but thank you anyway.
Okay.
I had read in one of the local newspapers, there was a proposed ordinance about forcing property owners to pave under motorized equipment they were storing. Does that ring a bell with anybody?
Yeah, so, we passed an ordinance, there was a.
Last month.
I'll turn on a loophole. There was a loophole in one of our zoning categories that said, if you were storing vehicles, you had to store them on paved surface. And of course, a paved surface then fed into stormwater maintenance, you know, management pond for environmental purposes. The loophole someone tried to drive through was, well, I have vehicles and I'm not parking them, I'm going to put them on gra, a gravel surface. So, and then during the, so that was the, what they were claiming was, I'm not parking the vehicles, I'm storing the vehicles, now I'm going to put them on gravel. And during the course of the discussion, this was a planning commission hearing, the, the petitioner actually admitted they were parking the vehicles. So what the council did, what the planning commission recommended, what the council did was eliminated the loophole. If you have a vehicle, you're going to store it, park it, it's got to be under paved surface, so it now drains into a stormwater management pond and, and the environmental issues are taken care of.
All right, so my question is, how does this impact the regular homeowner? Now, if I've got a lawn tractor, do I have to pave under it?
It does not affect a regular homeowner. This was in, in, and I forget the zoning category, but this did not deal with a residential.
Residential, okay.
Category, it was industrial.
This was, yeah. It was industrial, thank you, that answers my question.
Okay, thanks. Do we have anybody else? All right, I see the fire company is here, so I'll roll back to them.
Sorry, a little.
That's okay, welcome. We were aware there was disaster somewhere.
No, not, not with us. I'm Matthew Bowles, Lieutenant, Mount Airy Fire Company, sorry, President Walsh and Chief Loeman couldn't be here tonight, they had some prior engagements. Just got some statistical reports for us, we'll start with our rescue calls. Rescue calls for Carroll County, first due, we had 95 responses and mutual aid were six with a total of 101. Rescue calls for Frederick County, first due were 47, mutual aid were 19 with a total of 66. And Howard County, first due was one, mutual aid was three, with a total of four. Montgomery County, first due calls were, for rescue calls, was zero, mutual aid were five, and that's just a total of five, with a total of 176 rescue calls. Fire calls, first due, Carroll County calls were 12, mutual aid were two, with a total of 14. Frederick County, first due, fire calls were four, mutual aid were six, and that's a total of 10. And Howard County, first due, fire calls were zero, mutual aid one, just a total of one. Montgomery County was a, first due zero, mutual aid two, with a total of two, and that's a total of 27 fire calls. Call totals for Carroll County were 115 calls, Frederick County were 76, Howard County were five, Montgomery County were seven, for a total of 203 calls for the last month. I just want to remind everybody that we have our dinner coming up this Sunday, starting at 11:30 AM, the doors open, and our final breakfast is April 19th.
All right.
Just a, just a comment before you leave. A week or so ago, one of our residents passed away, Mr. Albert Musgrove, and he happened to be the president of Lisbon Volunteer Fire Company, also he lived here in Mount Airy. When he was buried, the funeral procession came by Mount Airy Fire Company, they had all their equipment out, men standing attention, very impressive.
Thanks, sir.
And it was cold that day, too. Were you there?
No, I, I had to work that day, but.
But it was very cold that day, and I, and I know Albert's written from ear to ear, he's nuts out here standing there in cold, but it was very nice of y'all to do that.
Thanks, sir.
I've known Albert for all my life, and I'm sure he, he would say, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
We have one question here, I think.
Yes, ma'am.
I should now replace my smoke alarms, I had five of them, they're 10 years old.
They should be replaced, they usually have a three to five year life on them, so they should replace, you should definitely replace them.
The whole system is electric and bad.
Yeah, you can find those at the local hardware store. Yep, yes, ma'am.
I think the new ones actually have a 10-year lithium battery in it, so that you don't have to worry about replacing batteries anymore, the newer ones.
Even the new ones with electric?
No, they, right, but the new ones are designed with a lithium battery for a 10-year life in them.
And that's what my question is.
Yeah, but she probably has a hard wire.
You probably, well, I, I've got them too, but, yeah, you'll need to replace them.
The newer, the newer ones last a little longer with the lithium.
The sensors go bad in them.
I know, because I would replace your batteries every six months.
Yeah.
Better safe than sorry. I saw somebody wrote it the other day, I saw a letter to the editor somewhere, it was like, well, how often should I replace the battery? Should I do it once a year, they still have a lot of life? And the guy said, well, you know, it's better to replace the battery than to have some other problem.
Soon as it beats, replace it.
Or if you've ever been woken up in the middle of the night by one beeping.
Good rule of thumb on that one is, every time the time change, spring forward and fall back, change your batteries and your smoke detectors, so.
All right.
Good information, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
I think we have, we're up here from Frederick County, did you want, have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Roger Wilson, I am the Director for Government Affairs and Policy with the County Executive's Office, so good to see, I recognize a couple of familiar faces, so I've seen before, so, but it's good to be here, and you'll start seeing my face quite a bit. This is my first time to Mount Airy's municipal meeting, so good to see everyone. If you have any questions, concerns, I'll leave my card with you, with the county, you know, we're, we're starting a fresh, new government, as you all are aware, we have a new charter government, okay, that's getting off to a fantastic start, in my opinion, and we're looking forward to working with everyone out here, okay?
Thank you very much.
Good, good, question.
Yeah, Roger, if you could help us emphasize, the town's planning commission is looking forward to working more closely with Frederick's planning commission, and there's some growth issues on our boundary that we're very, very concerned about, so if you could emphasize to, you know, to your planning commission that we look forward to working with them, and if you could make sure they get together with us, we'd appreciate that.
Absolutely, I'll take that back.
And also, I think you're, Jan's in the, and Jan is the county executive now, and she's in the process of, of starting some kind of meetings with municipalities on a regular basis.
Yeah, I'll address that, thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up. We, on a monthly basis, we have an executive meeting with the county executive and the mayors and burgers, just to make sure that there's communication, collaboration, there's no gap there. So on a monthly basis, we should, you should receive invites, okay? I'm not sure if that was being done before, but this is something that the county executive wanted to do, just to make sure that nothing was missing out there, okay?
They got one April 30th, isn't it? April 30th?
Yeah, I think, well, no, April 30th, I think, is the, is the board.
Yeah, I think April 30th.
Is having a, is having kind of a, just a get-together to meet and greet.
Yeah, the April 30th meeting is different, it's with the council, county council members, and they wanted to bring all the, your colleagues in to kind of talk and meet and greet, yeah, okay?
All right.
All right.
Anything else, gentlemen?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome, we're glad, we're glad, really glad to have you here. All right, let's move on to ordinances and resolutions. We have ordinance 2015-4, that was the ordinance to clarify street parking prohibitions. This is really just kind of a cleanup ordinance to, you know, just kind of fix a loophole, really.
I'll move ordinance 2015-4 for approval.
I will second it, any discussion?
Good question. Somebody, it says in here, pickups and pallet trucks are not included, correct? But if they have a sign on them, are they going to be included as commercial vehicles then? Does somebody use their truck to work with and they have a sign on the side of it, are we saying that's going to be a commercial vehicle then, or is that just going to be considered, also, you usually go back and forth to work?
But it's a work truck, so you're saying it has advertisement for a business?
I mean, he uses, that's the only truck he's got, maybe he's going to use it, is it going to be considered commercial? Maybe that's the only vehicle he has to use, or she has to use.
So I think, yeah, there's a difference between a truck.
A guy's got a pickup truck with, which says, you know.
I'm not saying that right here, it says pickup trucks.
He parks it at his house.
Right, so it sounds like Ken's point is, and I agree with him, that you want to exclude pickup trucks.
Well, it doesn't say exclude, but are, is, are we concerned, pickup trucks with signs on commercial vehicles, that's what my question is.
I believe that somewhere in the ordinance, and it may not be in the section that this, that is changed by this, if memory, "commercial truck" quote unquote is a defined term within the transportation article of the State of Maryland's code, and that somewhere in our code, we incorporate, I believe, by reference, that definition, and I do not believe that definition would include the type of truck that you are concerned about.
That's right.
It's also only parking, you know, on our public streets. If you put it in your driveway or in your parking lot, which every house has, I mean, if you're a townhouse.
Not necessarily.
If you're a townhouse, you've got a space.
Yeah.
If you're a house, you've got at least a driveway or a place to park your vehicle.
But it's not asphalt.
Or concrete or any.
But I don't think it has to be. Right. I mean, you would, you would just have to park it in your parking.
I just wanna make it clear, I'd hate to see somebody get a ticket because they have a pickup truck and get a ticket for parking, you know, parking lots or somewheres overnight and get a ticket because it's, they consider it a commercial vehicle, that's all.
That section that I was referring to is in this, in this ordinance here. It's not being changed, but if you look at subsection A one, the terms.
They all have the same definition.
Same definitions as in the Transportation Article.
Okay. That's the only question I have.
Any other discussion? Call for vote. Y'all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Up two thousand fifteen dash five, this is the ordinance to amend Chapter Seventy on licenses. This is essentially our peddler's license. I will introduce this. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I got a second from Chris.
And Peter, I have.
I have a couple of questions, too, so go ahead with yours.
I got two questions, and I have a couple of, a couple amendments. First question, the easy one. Page six, section seventy dash sixteen, renewals of peddler's license. This section doesn't describe how often the background check has to be redone. I know in the federal government, for positions of trust, they typically require a renewal every five years. So if the peddler does the first background check approved by the town clerk, they can continue to renew.
Forever.
Forever, but there's no provision for another background, so.
Even if they're now on the terrorist watch list, they keep.
Correct. So my first.
Good, good idea.
Amendment, and Tom, I'll look to you for the language. My first amendment to the ordinance will be that the, you renew your background check every five years.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, that, that sounds like a reasonable request.
I'll look to Tom for the.
Tom will sort that out. And we may, we may have enough changes here that we push this till next month, so.
Probably. But I guess by consensus, we're, seem we're okay with that?
Yeah, it looks like everybody, nobody has a problem with that.
Okay. The next question that I have, section seventy dash fifteen, subsection C. There's no rule for updating the do not, the do not solicit list. So you could, in theory, obtain the do not solicit list, begin your solicitation, and then between the time you go to a house, well, someone could have added themselves to the list.
I see what you're saying.
You're knocking on the list, but you have an, an old list. So, so we need some sort of.
They need to be able to come in and get the new list from time to time.
Well, every time it's updated, I send it. Now, we only have the one person who has a license, and he has a phone, and he gets it right on there.
Sure, but.
But that might not always be the case.
There should be some grace period, and again, I'll look to Tom for the language, but rather than put the burden on town staff to fire out a new list every time there's an update, because it could happen, right? You know, people are talking at a party, hey, let's all get on the list. So I'm just gonna look to Tom to come up with some language that specifies the, the, the time, a timeframe there.
What's our, what's our, I'm looking, what's our, our time period on the license?
One year.
One year.
You know, I, me, I don't have a problem with them just getting a new list every time they renew.
Oh, no, they need to have it more often than that.
Six months.
You mean a list? You mean a list for?
Yeah, get a list of.
No solicitation list.
Oh, that's, right now, that's changing constantly. So right.
We only have about a dozen people on the list, but.
Right, right.
We'll get one every day, maybe, or every other day.
Well, since we've done this.
Yeah, we, I mean, the question is, how are we gonna make them come out here and get it?
How about every six months?
Every quarter?
Every quarter.
Well, you know, I'm curious, maybe what we could just do is put, yeah, I was just gonna say, put it, have it go on the town website, and just make it their responsibility to check it.
But then you're, I'd have an issue with publishing people's personal information on our town website.
Well, you don't, but they're, just put addresses. I mean, everybody lives in town, you know.
That's your call.
Couldn't you pass what, that, for licensing?
Yeah, 'cause it's public knowledge anyways.
Are we, there had been some talk that we were going to give them some sort of no solicitation sticker or sign.
I had Lisa look into it. Right now, we have like twelve people.
Right.
Can you add me to that?
This only goes to the one gentleman. It doesn't go to all the other people that are out there without a permit.
Right.
The only thing is, people should just put that sticker out on the door, and it'll keep everybody out.
I'm not gonna put a sticker on my door.
At least it did laminate some that people can actually put. But, I mean, it's sticking it on the door. How many people are gonna actually do that, or on the glass?
I'm not gonna stick one on my door.
Can I suggest, is Bob saying, can I just suggest, the list is updated every ninety days. So if they're using a list that's ninety-one days old, then.
They're, they're, they're out of compliance, yeah.
And they have to pick it up.
You really want me just to update that, get that list to them every ninety days? I think it should be more.
No, no, they need to pull it every, they need to come in and pull it.
At least every ninety days, they need to come here and make sure they have an updated list. If you, if you're giving it to them quicker and they're taking it quicker, that's fine.
Okay, yeah, 'cause that.
Right.
You're doing the minimum.
Yeah, the minimum is ninety days.
We just keep a call. I promise to get that to our one solicitor.
Yeah, I understand that, but, of course, we're doing a lot of talking about, and we've had one in, in a hundred years, one person's applied.
With the changes that are going on in this, that's probably the last one, more likely.
Okay. And then my last amendment will be section seventy dash fifteen, subsection E.
Seventy, fifteen, E.
And the change will be, right now, it reads, a licensee may only peddle or solicit between the hours of nine AM to six PM. My amendment says as follows, a licensee may only peddle or solicit between the hours, Monday through Friday, excluding all federal holidays, and the, between the hours of ten AM and five PM, again, excluding federal holidays.
Which, what was the time, I'm sorry?
Ten AM and five PM.
She shaved an hour off each end.
And between twelve PM and four PM, Saturdays and Sundays.
She's got it set.
I agree, but I, I think we're getting in trouble for too restrictive.
Well, that's pretty strict, I, I think that's.
Yeah, I mean, I have to think that Friday and Saturday is their big day, 'cause that's when people are home, so.
That's, that's my amendment. The, the intent here is to protect the privacy of our citizens.
I'm assuming we only have one licensed peddler.
We have one. Bless his heart. And he calls and checks on things.
You know, I.
Some are just curious. Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts fall into this?
No, not profits.
They're exempt, because they're not profits. Freedom of politicalism falls on.
News is commercial.
Exempted on this.
I'm, I'm curious, is any other town district with something?
No. I had Lisa do a survey through all the towns. Absolutely, we are, we were the strictest, now we're the absolute.
We're even more strict.
We're even more strict.
I don't see anybody, I don't see any of our citizens fighting this.
I'm resistant.
I'm sorry, Ken, you can fight it. I mean, I'm not even resisting.
See, my perspective is, I don't know, we need to restrict the time, 'cause people just put themselves on the list to never get contacted. I mean, I'm just gonna put myself on the list, so nobody will solicit to me anytime.
But the only problem we're having is people call and think that, because it's just not that one person, they think this is gonna stop all the people that aren't supposed to be out there.
Well, if somebody shows up after you're on the list, they're, they're illegal, you can call the police.
Well, no, but, I mean, it's the other people that never got a permit in the first place.
Well, I mean, y'all, that's my amendment. Y'all have to accept amendment, that's my amendment.
My question is, you said call the police, is the police gonna enforce this?
Well, I think once we get our own.
That's my, that's my question.
I think we'll do better in next year's budget when we.
They have been pretty good. We've had some calls where older people have gotten harassed, and I've called, and they have jumped on it. They fined a few of them. Yeah, they have, they've been pretty good.
'Cause I know my neighbor and I called once, and we were told there was nobody available.
And Ken, by, by charter, you can write a citation.
Yes, we can.
We can write citations by charter. You can enforce it by writing a citation.
Ken, I'll let you write those citations.
I, I don't know if I.
We can write parking tickets, too, but I never have, 'cause that's a way to lose votes, I'm sorry.
Somebody's running for it. Peter, my, my recommendation, my recommendation going off of what Chris said would be that, I mean, we have a lot of changes in here already. I think being so restrictive, nine, you know, going past the nine to six right now, I think, sort of like we did with water, those incremental steps, let's do the nine to six and see if there's a problem, and if we need to, then go to the.
The messer on the weekends?
Yeah, to make it even more restrictive. I think if we do it too restrictive, we could have an issue.
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of of the same, a little, we have, we have a, when I was in Parks and Recs, and it was you and me together, Peter, where we, we came up with rules for the fields, not before nine o'clock any day of the week, not before noon on Sunday. And that was, you know, so the, the, the time was the same, Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday, not before noon. You just don't have people knocking on your door before noon. Not that I get to sleep then on Sunday or anything.
Yeah, that's my, that's the earliest I get up in a week. That's my earliest day.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I guess I'm kind of hearing a consensus that we necessarily don't want to go along with those restrictions.
How about federal holidays?
You mean excluding federal holidays?
Yeah.
See, I would think that's a big, you know.
I'm, I'm more interested in protecting folks' privacy in their house, their homes. I'm not interested in, 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 I, I'm not, I'm interested in protecting folks' privacy in their homes. Folks find it very annoying when someone comes knocking on their door, they want peace and privacy in their home, and I think.
Yeah, I, I mean, I can see that.
I, I mean, I understand what he's saying, but at the same time, we have not had a problem to date where the, one of, as the girls just said, one of the most restrictive municipalities, and they don't have problems with it either. So are we creating a problem that we don't have right now?
Well, you are taking, you are taking a segment of the population, and this is how they sell. Now, they, they haven't been doing it per our guidelines for the past twenty-three years that I've been here, but I think the people that, that do it by our guidelines should be allowed to do it. You're, you're just removing one whole segment, and I'm not for, I got a no soliciting sign right on my front door right now.
Right.
So I'm, I'm not for this, but I'm, I'm for the right, for people to solicit to your house as long as they follow the rules and follow the regulations. And it doesn't become too restrictive on Debbie and the girls down here, where that's all you're dealing with. And I don't think that'll happen.
See, my, my thinking on this was that the company should get the license, not the individual. He works for the company. Instead of an individual, he may have to submit to these other things, but a company, it seemed like to me, they should be the one getting this permit. They might have three or four employees, these ones gotta pay seventy-five dollars.
The problem we have is that we can't check, do a background check really on a company.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do, you require that.
But it's not the same as the person. I mean, what else?
No, 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 listen me out. You still require whoever they submit names to.
Oh, you say both?
Right.
Okay.
But you only pay one fee, it covers the company. They could have three or four employees. Seems unfair that if you got three or four employees, each one's gotta do that and pay seventy-five dollars. Seemed like it should be a company.
I'm, Ken, I would not suggest changing that, 'cause these people are going door to door, and especially in the elderly community, you wanna protect folks from somebody bashing in their house, or whatever the.
I haven't heard that. Maybe you have, but I haven't heard that bashing. I don't know.
So I, I understand what you're saying. I think from the perspective, the time, let's separate that. I think we can, is there a consensus on time first? 'Cause I wanna address the whole seventy-five dollars to our company. Does everybody agree, leave it nine to six right now?
I don't have a problem leaving it nine to six for now.
So Peter, it doesn't have a problem, you don't have a problem right now. I know, Chris, you wanna make the change, but you're probably fine with as long as the nine to six is in there for now?
Yes.
Yes. No problem. Okay, good. So time out of the way. So the seventy-five dollars, I think, the one comment I'd bring up to read, but what you said, Ken, is that, think if a company brings in a truckload of people and drops them all off, and says, go blanket a neighborhood, go sell, 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 and they're banging on nine thousand homes all at once, versus just one person or two or three, right? Look at the worst-case scenario, which is what the law applies to, of if you have that many people coming through, I don't think we want that in our town. Not that that's gonna happen, but I'm just saying. This would stop that from happening.
Right. And I think, Ken.
That'd be my only comment.
Part of the difference is, you and I grew up with the Fuller Brushman and the Electrolux, and you bought Encyclopedia.
Charles Chips.
Yes. And you, so, there, there, there used to be honest salesmen out there, and this was, you, there was no Fuller Brush Company to go to. They knocked on your door. So, and, and, you know, I mean, some of us in the other, we remember this stuff. Hell, I've got a Tupperware, I've got an Electrolux vacuum cleaner, I got two of them. My parents.
Hey, solicitor, Bob's house.
With the no solicitation sign.
He'll buy two of everything.
But, I mean, one, one was my dad's, and then one was mine, and the sucker is still running. So, you know, there are, you don't wanna completely forbid good, honest salesman people that are out there, because this is where they sell.
And I think we're giving them tools.
Right.
The town and our, and the residents, because they have the no solicitation list, they can put no solicitation signs, which then, if people aren't abiding by that, they can effectively call the police. So I think we kind of have a blend of the two, in my opinion.
Ken, here's the, Lisa made this up and laminated it, for people to use. You have to, and we are in the process, they're a little pricey, but getting them ordered, if that's the direction everybody wants to go.
Not me. I mean, I, I'll go on a list, but I'll not stick one of those on my door. I'm sorry. That's just me.
Well, you know, I mean, this is up to the.
But like I said, it's only gonna cover the one that's permitted.
Yeah, I mean, the uns.
Right, but what I'm saying is, but I, but I was gonna go on the list, so the one that's permitted won't bother me.
Right.
All the other ones will.
So I'll call, get on the list.
We have a list. You can go on it.
And you can, you can call here at Town Hall, or if you're still here when we're done, Lisa will get it for you.
And the people who are legally peddling are then not supposed to bother you. So if somebody knocks on your door, they are then not legally peddling.
And I am telling everyone, they need to call the troopers. I mean, some of the, I've had a few women that have called me and been morally upset, because the people won't go away.
Yeah.
And that's what they need to do.
Okay.
We don't have that many boys. So you need to call, let my brother find a man in the neighborhood or something.
Oh, yeah, you need to call the police. No, you need to call the police. You're paying, your taxes are paying for them. You need to call them.
I had a couple of issues I was gonna raise. If, if you're done with your expression?
Yeah, thank you.
I had a question. We're requiring that we determine the issues dealing with the person's automobile in seventy-eleven H, make model and year and tag. If they get a new car or have more than, you know, let's, I'll assume they could give us all of them if they, but when they get a new car, is there some updating on that? I didn't, you know.
It's not explicit here, no.
I think H is kind of just, give us one, you're fine. It doesn't say if you change cars or anything. Whatever car you're using while you're soliciting should be.
Should be registered.
Registered with the town.
Right.
Somebody said it was a red Ford. It.
You figure out who it is, yeah.
It listed as a red Ford.
Other question I had, Tom, is dealing with solicitors at commercial businesses. I mean, for example, I know that like if, if the restaurants around here, all right, if you, the, the sales reps from food service companies, they are always stopping in at the local restaurants, trying to get them to buy their meat and not the other meat, you know? Pepsi's always stopping by if you got Coke taps and saying, hey, I'll give you a better deal on the Pepsi, I'll put it in a machine, or, or Coke's doing it to the Pepsi guys. That's the way commercial businesses do work, particularly in the restaurant business. You know, the food vendors are, oh, you know, our hamburgers are better, I can get you this cheaper than this food service company.
Doctors with pharmaceuticals.
I was gonna say pharmaceuticals.
Correct. Pharmaceuticals knocking on doctors' offices, yeah.
Here's a whole bunch of samples.
And I, I'm just concerned that this may infringe on that.
We have a list of exceptions, though, in a separate section that is not being addressed. And I can't, you have, you know, I.
Well, that's my question. Do we make it clear that it's just residential?
So nobody better be doing pharmaceuticals in the residence.
Seventy.
Seventy fifteen.
Okay, and what was the section?
In the, chapter seventy, there's a section that has exceptions and includes the girl's house.
Papers, I was faster.
Contents, applications, exemptions.
Exemptions seventy-nine.
One, the first exemption is persons selling merchandise to manufacturers, wholesalers, retailers for use in their business or use...
Okay, good, we're covered. Because I didn't see it in here.
No, right.
Okay, well, it's covered elsewhere, okay, that satisfies that, that's, like I said, when I went through this, this ordinance, I didn't see that, so we've got it somewhere else in the code, all right. Uh, those would be, you know, my questions. Do you wanna try and amend it tonight? Chris, mostly amendments were yours, do you want Tom to try and come up with language tonight, or just come back with, or put this off till next month and have Tom come back with an updated version?
I'll defer to you and Tom, I mean, I don't...
I'm thinking that may be the best way to do it, and Tom would probably prefer the...
I would prefer the chance to do it rather than do it at the table.
All right, well, it's, it's already been introduced, and we have like seventy-five days to bring it up, so it'll just come up next month, with a newer, with a, with a slightly amended version. All right, ordinance two thousand fifteen dash six to adopt the tax rate, that's for introduction, um, I will, it's to keep the tax rate at point one-six-nine-five per hundred, I will introduce that, do I have a second from Bob, raising his hand, okay. And that'll be dealt with next month when we do with the budget, because really, the budget's gonna drive this.
Yeah, I was gonna, right, I was gonna ask the obvious question, um, we introduce it, but we don't really set it until after the budget.
Correct.
Right, because how do you set the tax rate?
Well, this way we can, this way it's ready to be set when the budget's done.
Good.
And I'm gonna have it advertised.
Yeah, this, this way it's ready to be set, and if we can change it, but it's, it's, it's been introduced, so it's ready. Uh, all right, two thousand fifteen dash seven...
I don't have that one.
Me neither.
Which one's seven?
It's showing a text amendment in the industrial district.
That was sent to Heather, but I think Heather's...
Nothing's in my package.
Yeah, it didn't, I don't think it got to me either, so...
Still have to wait till next meeting?
Yeah, we were, uh, I had drafted it, I sent it to Heather, and she was gonna make some comments, but obviously she's...
We will, we will let that one, we'll let that one go.
Yeah.
Um, that'll come, uh, we'll shoot for next, Debbie, try and flag that for next month's agenda.
Okay.
Uh, two thousand fifteen dash eight, this is our budget amendment to reallocate forty thousand dollars from general fund for the traffic study, and we got a write-up on this. I will, and this is here, we're just here for introduction tonight, I will introduce this, do I have a second? Second from Scott, it's introduced, it should come up next month.
And there's a write-up on it that we're gonna get?
Well, that's, you got your...
Is it?
Yeah. All right, we've got resolution two thousand fifteen dash two to support downtown revitaliz- revitalization and ep- economic development, Chris, that's yours, is this one of these ones we just kind of have to pass a resolution in order to meet some state requirement?
And, well, that was, that was the original intent, so, um, I'll explain what the resolution was about, why it got pulled off, and then I'll ask for council consensus on a different direction. Um, for many years, we've talked about revitalizing downtown. Um, Councilman King has been working on some of the same issues revitalizing downtown. The purpose of the resolution initially was this, within the downtown zone, I was gonna propose that the tap fees that come into the town get refunded...
Has Heather mentioned this to me?
Yep, the tap fees, which are quite substantial, get refunded back to anybody within the downtown zone who's rehabbing property, building something new, again, as a way to try to jumpstart, you know, something substantial to jumpstart revitalization of downtown, because the tap fees can be really expensive, especially in, if you're doing the mixed-use, yeah, in, for a mixed-use project, where you've got retail down at the bottom, and you pay X, and you've got residential components up top, and you're paying X, Y, Z, you're paying a lot of money. Okay, so that was the original intent. Tom took a look at it, unfortunately, there's a provision in our charter that says that tap fees must be applied uniformly across the town. So, what I asked Tom to do was look at that charter, the portion of the charter, and according to Tom's legal researches, we can't do that. The tap fees are there to cover the costs, you know, for providing service, so we just can't turn around and refund them back. So, since we can't, so anyway, that's the background behind that. Now, subsequent to that, I've also been in discussions with, um, Richard Rothschild, our Carroll County Commissioner, about some ideas for revitalizing downtown, and here's where I'm kind of looking for consensus. In my discussions with Commissioner Rothschild, I asked him if, if he could help us, from a county level, start to look at tax credits or some other substantial programs to help our downtown move, and Commissioner Rothschild immediately put me in contact with small business that, business advocates, so, um, the Commissioner has the Carroll County staff basically on standby, ready to start helping us put together an economic, you know, help us put together some sort of economic incentives to get downtown moving, things like rail yard, things like the bank building, and issues like that. So, what I'm trying to do here is really look for council consensus, if the council's okay, I'll continue to work with Commissioner Rothschild to put together some economic incentives, bring it to the council for discussion, so we can start to get downtown moving.
One thing that EDC is, is working kind of on a parallel surface here, and, and one thing that we were, were looking at, and Tom, I, I know I had talked to you a little bit about this at one time, instead of, for example, um, say he's gonna bring forty-eight units online over there, but when the town buries it, okay, and, and he gets ready to hook up, it's, it's somewhere around eighteen thousand per unit. Now, there, there's a, there's a point where that breaks off, and I'm not sure I understand where it is, but if you just take eighteen thousand times forty-eight units, that's a million dollars that he has to lay on the table right now. And what EDC was looking at, instead of laying all that, defer the payment until the, the unit comes online, until the unit is actually using water and sewer. And, you know, I, I don't know if that's somewhere in the ballpark, you might, you might discuss that with, you know, the Commissioner.
Absolutely.
It's, it's one of the things we have been talking about.
And we would probably just have to do that uniformly throughout the town.
Well...
Or could we, could we defer, would that be...
But there's a cost associated when you hook up, so if you defer it, you're deferring the cost realized, realized for hooking up the water, even if they never use it, that you're paying for us to bum them in, you're, you know, the whole nine yards.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, well, actually, no, the, the, the builder, the developer pays all of the phys- costs for connection, the tap fees, the eighteen, eighteen-two that Councilman King refers to, plus the additional fees per unit, which really starts to add up, those are fees paid to the town directly for providing, so, providing service.
Providing service.
Right, so, Councilman King's recommendation, which is also a very solid one, is you could defer the payment of the tap fees, or you could graduate the payment, you could extend it out over the lifetime. It's money that the town wouldn't directly collect, but, you know, again, for many years, we've been talking about doing something downtown, well, here is one idea we...
Yeah, and, you know, we, are, are we, we're pushing downtown development, but what are we actually doing? How are we actually helping these developers to, you know, be able, be able to put up the buildings that they want? And so, yeah, we, we've been looking through a lot of different things, um, that was one, and I just wasn't, there's, there's a breakpoint, and I don't remember where it is, Barney, I think you told me about it one time, that after a certain point, they become thirteen, thirteen thousand.
That's still a lot of money.
Yeah.
If I understand it right, I, I think it's eighteen-four for the first tap of a building.
Right.
If there's six taps in a, in a building, the remaining taps are forty-nine hundred.
Forty-nine hundred.
Yeah, so if you, in, your example, Councilman King, it'd be like eighteen K to hook up, plus rounded up five K per unit, and it's a substantial amount, so...
And, and only the first tap fee is required at the time of the shell building.
Okay.
Uh, so they only ask for the first tap, uh, the others do already, uh, I think they pay when they're, when they come in to develop each section of the building.
Yeah, that was, that's what I wasn't understanding.
But I think, I think the challenge was, if I remember correctly, and you can, you know, we don't have to belabor this, but looking at the, one project across the street, the challenge was, was that in order to put the buildings in, you had to do all four at once, off the line, right? There was an issue that Rob had talked about with putting all four in at once.
I think we talked about that we, we could stage that, we'd do one building at a time, but I don't, I'm not sure where that comment's coming from.
I know Heather had talked about it, too, so...
And she's not here, otherwise I'd be asking her for details.
I mean, that's never gone to final design or PWA, but we've done phasing of projects before.
I, I talked a long time ago about a ten-year deferred-type program, working it over ten years for something coming on, and a person would end up signing off an agreement that they pay one tenth every year.
Right, yeah.
And you could make that part of public force agreement.
All right, well, I think, I think there's, I think people are kind of saying, we're willing to hear what comes back.
Okay, all right, I mean, I'll take it as consensus, I worked with Commissioner Rothschild to try to put together, help the county, have the county committee try to help us put together some tax incentive, some programs, and start moving the downtown.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. All right, uh, unfinished, I've got nothing listed under unfinished business.
May I ask one question about the fiber optic network? Is that likely to go into residential areas also?
Do we know anything about that?
Yes, I, I actually...
Okay, Bob knows about that one.
That's, that's part of the Economic Development Commission also. Um, we just had a, we, we just had a little lecture, um, the fellow's name was Mark Ripper, and he is the Carroll County representative that, that's installing this in Carroll County. Westminster is install, is, is bringing a business, a business entity online and a neighborhood online with the fiber optic. Um, it, it's something we're beginning to discuss in economic development, it comes right up here, with their, the fiber optic already connects to schools, comes right outside of this building here, the library and the senior center.
But that's a private, that's a private fiber optic network, that's not, you know, for citizens to tap into, that's a governmental...
Um, at, at this point, it is, but what Westminster's doing, what Carroll County has done, is they are expanding that to include residents.
And they're also looking to make hotspots off of it for Wi-Fi.
Right, and, and it gives you, they, they have some, some Wi-Fi applications, so we're really trying to look and, and see what the benefit to bringing that fiber optic to town would be. We, we've just started digging on it, um, it, it's in my, it's in my economic development report tonight, but we had a very good meeting with Mark Ripper. Um, Carroll County has invested twenty-six million.
I think it was eight.
They, they were...
Eighteen?
Eighteen million, they, they started out thinking this was gonna be a very small project, and everybody loves it, they're running it throughout the county, it's going to attract a different kind of business customer.
Yeah, they're running the back line right now.
Yeah, they're, so there's a lot happening on that, and, and we have a chance to get in on it, and, and look at how other people have been doing it, and, and use the models that are out there to evaluate whether, whether we think it's good for Mount Airy or not.
But I think the long and the short is, fiber to your house, not, probably not in the near future.
Not right.
Right, I mean, FiOS has not come, continued up twenty-seven.
Right.
No, we did, we did buy another link for that.
And it's, they stopped it.
Yeah.
We're, we're nine thousand feet away from the nearest drop.
Just for, um, public disclosure, I've got a, I've got a conflict, so I can leave if I...
We're not talking, we're not talking about...
No, no, no details, just trying to figure out what fiber optic is and when it's coming. We're working on it, Ellen.
But, but I will say, I get speeds at home at Comcast, they're just incredible.
Oh, now, definitely would be.
Oh, yeah.
As an employee of Verizon.
I mean, I, I get, I'm, I'm getting like a hundred twenty megabits per second download speeds on Comcast.
Right, off your neighbor's router.
No, off of mine. Well, I put it, I, I bought a new router, put it in myself, the speeds are really fast.
Since Comcast shares.
Yeah, that's right, but, but when, but I, I mean, I'm getting speeds that are, you know, much better than I even, than I need.
Speeds make your head spin, huh, Peter?
Yeah, all right, street closing for the Fireman's Parade, um, I moved that we, uh, close the streets for the Fireman's Parade on January, July twenty-third, uh, they're asking for, well, they just said seven PM, but whatever the usual times are.
I'll second it.
All right, everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I saw...
Everybody's hands.
All right, next one up is the Chili Cook-Off, they're street closing on the eighteenth from six to six, I will move that, do I say your second from Bob, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we earned our chili. Okay, street closing for the Cubmobile race.
Oh, can I move that one, this is Cub?
Yeah, sure, it's Cub's, go ahead.
I'll move that one in.
I'll, I'll second it.
Ken probably has that one. Because they used, because when I was on streets, they used to always give me the Cubmobile, what's the, I don't have the date.
No, it came, it came right this afternoon.
May second. The date of events, April twenty-fifth.
Is it here, is it here, oh, here, okay, it's in the new packet.
April twenty-fifth, rain dates, May second.
All right, it was not in the packet I had at home, it was the packet when I got here.
If I had come out in those streets and roads...
Uh, I will move that we closed it, uh, the dates requested and the rain date requested, if needed, uh, well, actually, I'll second, I'm seconding Chris's. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that day, you moved in the Cubs. Maryland twenty-seven corridor study recommendation, Barney.
Okay.
Got your name there.
Yep, um, so we're seeking council approval toward the corridor study, um, to the consultant with the best combined proposal and qualifications. Uh, we did put out a study to study, um, I mean, a RFP to study, um, nine intersections from Penn Shop Road to, uh, North Main Street along Maryland twenty-seven, uh, it includes sixteen additional intersections that relate to Maryland twenty-seven.
Penn Shop to where?
Penn Shop to the North Main Street.
Okay.
Which should be the boundary...
All the intersections in between.
Opposed there or something like...
Right. The far Penn Shop or the close Penn Shop?
I was gonna say, if you're, if you're...
At the light, at the light, the close Penn Shop.
Oh, okay, so not White Penn Shop, okay.
Almost need to go to the Howard County Penn Shop, which is just...
Which is the further one, yeah, but actually, he's at the light, he's going at the light, he's not even going all the way to Penn Shop, or White, the further, okay.
Um, so, um, it'll provide an assessment of the intersection, existing conditions, um, so at current conditions now, at half build-out of all of our vacant land, and then at full build-out, so it looks at it at three stages. Um, this is a, um, an amendment that will, I mean, an addendum that will be added to the, um, the town's recent master plan, um, is, is the idea of it, and, um, let's see, it'll include traffic analysis, will be calculated along the synchro simulation model, um, for all the various stages, and for all the intersections included, um, not only vehicular traffic, it'll also talk about bicycle, pedestrian, it'll include all those as part of it. Um, it will provide detailed mitigation options where we will, at, say at half build-out, we start to lose, uh, Twin Arch Road, for example, um, it'll provide mitigation options, how we can get around that, where we can add connections, and it will also not only include those options, but also include cost estimates to provide those options.
I see a question from Scott.
Yeah, so, in your RFP, did you clarify whether you were looking for best cost, best service, or did you just put out an RFP just saying who could provide services?
No, it was, um, so it was for proposal and qualifications, and we said that they would be equally weighted.
Okay, but you, so you stated both were overqualified in qualifications and presentation?
Right, correct.
So, you're choosing the lower bid because just cost?
Uh, for primarily cost, yes.
I mean, not, not that I'm opposed to it, but sometimes you get what you pay for, so I'm just curious.
No, they're, they're both well-qualified, we think we're gonna get a great report from either one.
Okay.
So, he thinks it's cheaper for equal?
Yeah.
What are you saying?
So, at that point, it does come down to cost.
Just asking the question.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, we did receive two proposals, um, and we are recommending the lower of the two proposals, uh, which is Sabrewang and Associates in the amount of seventy-five thousand, four Which is Sabrewang and Associates in the amount of seventy-five thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. We do have a budget currently in the current year of seventy thousand and fifty thousand in the proposed budget for next year.
Okay, so we're gonna spread it between the two years?
And the reason we added the fifty thousand for next year is because we won't get all this spent this year. Because it's about a six-month study.
Okay.
So, um, we're looking at in excess of forty thousand dollars and that was part of that, um, the, what you introduced as the budget amendment for the forty thousand dollars from this study.
So Barney, what you need is, um, a motion to accept the study from S W A at seventy-five thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents?
Correct.
So moved. I got a second, I see Bob raising his hand, his pen first. Any, any discussion? You were up a little bit before Chris, I'm sorry.
I was just scratching. The, uh, the gentleman from, that's the liaison to the.
To planning wants to be the second on that.
That honor.
We're streets and roads.
We're streets and roads.
No, I've got comments, if you're ready for comments.
Yeah, we're ready for comments.
To me, this is a, a, a lot of money just to a study. Maybe I'm the only one seeing this, but we're just a small town. We're not like, I could see spending seventy-five thousand dollars maybe for Baltimore City or Warrenson, but seventy-five thousand dollars just for a little town in Mount Airy, do a study? That's ridiculous to me. Absolutely ridiculous.
The, Ken, the concern's valid, seventy-five Ks is a lot of money. The study's critical for the execution of the master plan. Master plan is now done, we're beginning to execute on it, a number of things. As Barney mentioned, as we do infill, what happens to traffic? As we start to look at things on Twin Arch and development back there, what happens to traffic? And then really becomes critical is Harrison LaShear. Whatever happens with Harrison LaShear, unless we have the traffic study, it's gonna be very, very difficult for us to evaluate what we do with Harrison LaShear. So, um, this traffic study, while yes costly, is is a key linchpin to starting to execute upon our master plan that we all jointly. So that that's why I fully support it. But the, the, your caution and your note on cost is is very well-founded. I wouldn't vote for it other than it's critical to move the mass, move us forward in the future.
Any other discussion? Ken, I will say, I understand what you're saying. I just know from having seen some of these proposals over, you know, over the years, they're gonna tell us at a whole bunch of intersections. What's going to happen if a whole bunch of different things happen? You know, okay, you build here, this intersection's gonna increase this much and here's how much it's gonna cost and the three different ways you have to fix it. And when you figure the number of intersections running up and down the road.
It's not our intersections, it's state intersections, state road, why are we doing a state road?
Well, we're, we're the ones who are gonna have to upgrade them if it's, we're the ones who are developing them.
Right, it's a state highway, why are we doing a study on a state highway?
It's also, it's also taking into consideration, what if the state does something, what's it do to us? What's it do to our residents? We wanna know that so that we can make decisions for planning or economic development or anything else in the future to say, back acre circle, for example. We develop that out, we already know there's gonna be a problem on Twin Arch. Right?
Right, and it costs you seventy-five thousand dollars either, doesn't it?
But we don't know how bad the problem is. And they're providing remediation, this is what you'd have to do to fix it and this is the cost associated, I can't answer that.
I just give my opinion, I think it's ridiculous to spend seventy-five thousand dollars for a study to do on state highway and you already know you have traffic.
I think they're gonna do more than just the state highway.
We've traditionally had developers do this when they come in to develop.
But this is a much larger.
But this is a margin, right, normally, right, normally developers.
They only do their section.
Right, right, normally somebody's gonna build on Twin Arch, they would have to do a study on Twin Arch. But of course, the problem we have is when they do the study on Twin Arch to fix Twin Arch, it doesn't say anything about South Main or North Main or.
Center.
Center Street.
Center Street, Park, none of that.
Or or all of those, it doesn't, it does, they they don't, they're, and we've seen actually this problem where a developer will give us, you know, okay, I'm gonna build this here and it's gonna affect this intersection out front this much. And then we see it messes up six more intersections going down the way.
And and, sorry, I can't emphasize enough Harrison LaShear. If we, if the town decides to move forward with Harrison LaShear, because remember there's nominally a hundred acres of parkland that the town would obtain feels for our kids. There's no way to evaluate what happens with the traffic all the way through without said study. How do we evaluate whether or not we entertain the idea of go forward? You know, Scott said, your, your caution on cost is is very valid, but I I think.
I know, just from a community standpoint, that we would have appreciated having had a traffic study over one of our concerns in the past. I, I see many reasons why a good traffic study at intersections up and down twenty-seven will benefit the citizens in Mount Airy as well.
Thank you.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One opposed? All right. All right, North Main Street and East Ridgeville Boulevard sidewalk. Barney, this is, coming in is your recommendation, we already had a little bit of discussion on this one earlier.
Right, so sidewalk improvements, originally, um, yeah, we had North Main Street from Watersville Road to North Town Court. And then East Ridgeville Boulevard from basically the top of the hill behind Burger King down to Conestoga. We did add two pieces to that East Ridgeville. One was for Mrs. White's house. She's not the quarter house at Conestoga, she's the next lot on Ridgeville, which is the last house before you turn to go back to like Brownling. So it's about eighty feet of sidewalk that we're adding.
Did you put a pole in?
And we can put a bolt pole in or or something, so we'll, we'll certainly address the other side of her sidewalk driveway, but she was the only one from the driveway over, was all she was asking.
Maybe put a curb like the one that's across the street at the hair place.
Yeah, one of those tall curbs, yes.
Dragos.
And then at the other end, at the very, when you get to the top of the hill, what we did is we added. At first, the first proposal, they were gonna put a crosswalk at the top of the hill where, um, Andrew's, Andrew Williamson's chiropractor first. They have a sidewalk on the other side and we're gonna put it on the south side. And they were just gonna add a crosswalk there. The concern there is having people cross there, it's at a bend, it's where a lot of truck traffic's coming in. And if somebody's going to the shopping center, the Peacock Center, um, the thought was just keep them on the same side of the street and and take the sidewalk all the way to the shopping center, so.
Oh, okay, gotcha, yeah, don't make them cross.
Basically behind the five guys, the, the sidewalk could continue to the shopping center. So we added that piece also.
Now, I I guess, one thing that used to come up quite often, you know, when I was on Streets and Roads, do these people recognize that when we add this sidewalk? They are here and after going to be responsible for it and when it needs to be redone in twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, they're gonna be footing the bill.
Right, and and we will do the same procedure where we send us a letter to them for them to return to us.
Okay, so that they know that, you know, for those of you who don't know, that the town is not responsible for the sidewalks in the town. If there's a sidewalk in front of your house, um, when it fails, you're the one who has to replace it or fix it. Now, I will say the town quite often works things, but the town code says the sidewalk's your responsibility. It's, you know, it's not, it's not the town responsibility and usually it's actually technically actually in your yard. It's not actually in property that we own. It's actually on your property and you're required to put it in when it's built. Now, sometimes when we put in new ones, we often don't make people pay for that.
It's kind of a gimme.
Right, it's kinda, yeah, right, cause they, well, they'll say, don't put it in. You know, I mean, who's, you know, I mean, I would never say put a sidewalk in if I knew I was gonna pay to put it in, but, you know, hopefully in twenty, thirty years, I won't have to deal with it. All right.
Question, um, and I've always asked these questions when it comes to sidewalk when I was on planning. A hundred forty thousand dollars is a whole lot of money.
It's a lot of concrete.
It's a whole lot of money and. I just, I don't believe, I've never believed that the cost for sidewalks, when you're serving such a small area. And I mean, all, and all difference to Mrs. White, who won't be happy with the statement, but, but a hundred forty thousand dollars we're gonna spend on sidewalks that will be used very, very infrequently, if at all, on North Main Street. So especially on North Main Street. And I just counted the number, you know, homes along, um, um, Ridgeville, it's like maybe thirty homes you're serving. So we're gonna spend a hundred forty thousand dollars, make some people unhappy because they're gonna lose right-of-way and then construction costs and things like that. And to me, the hundred forty thousand dollars, I think would be better either saved or used, used towards roads. Cause now if you start to look around town, we get a lot of roads that are really starting to get torn up because of the winter. And, you know, while we did get some of our highway user revenue fund back, you know, cause Nick Donovan Hogan, that was one of his, um, things he ran on, right? Give us our highway money back.
Give us back our money.
Our money that 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 somebody else is using in balance or budget, but I I I'm not for, um, spending a hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars on sidewalks, I just don't think the expense is justified.
Scott?
I mean, we've had this discussion multiple times about the safety of our residents and doing what's necessary to protect them. If we have to spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars for thirty homes in that area, depending on if we do anything with Conestoga down the way. I say we end up needing to do it. It is something that we've ended up doing within the town limits for ensuring that all new homes have sidewalks when they come in. So why would we all of a sudden say, oh, there's thirty homes, we're just not gonna care about those? We cared about them enough to put them into the town boundaries, we care about them enough to charge them taxes and to make them have to abide by all their other rules, we should treat them the same.
Amen. One life, how, you know, what what's its cost, you know? So a hundred fifty thousand dollars is, that's.
Can I make a clarification? I wanna make a clarification, uh, cause I'm not sure if everybody's understanding, this is just the engineering services. So, next budget is the installation. That's the construction, so I wanna clarify. Now, this does include storm drainage design or anything that, um, one of the reasons for East Ridgeville going down, it's a long hill.
Oh, yeah.
And you don't wanna just send, you don't wanna collect it all on the curb and send it all down the hill, so. We're have to, have to collect that as we go.
So how much, how much money we're talking about, Barney?
Well, we have, we have the engineering here, um, I'm gonna say it's about double when you add the construction.
Half this year, half next year?
Yes.
No, I think what he's saying is a hundred fifty thousand for the engineering, a hundred fifty thousand to put in the concrete.
Right, so how, and we're doing half in this year and half the next year.
I wanted to clarify for everybody else who is following along.
It's about equal to what the installation is.
Okay, so.
And part of it is that they have to study every, uh, they have to pull every plat, make sure everything's put.
So we're, we're doing.
Resurvey everything, yes.
We're doing ten thousand a home, according to Chris's numbers.
I don't know how many homes.
Thirty homes.
Three hundred thousands.
Could we, all right, so now we're talking about spending three hundred thousand dollars, could we query the residents and see if they even want this done? I I'm sensitive to the human safety.
Well, I think that was what I was kind of asking about, we're gonna send them all letters. And what's the, what's the process if they come in? I mean, cause I I remember when I first got on Streets and Roads, there was a community, we talked about putting sidewalk in and they came in and complained. They said, we don't want sidewalks. And because of that, we withdrew the sidewalks and they don't have sidewalks.
Do we, just to tag on to that, do we tell people building new residents if they say, I don't want a sidewalk?
It's different when you're building a sidewalk.
I'm just asking the question.
When you buy.
If we're telling a group, I think we're being selective and then I'm gonna look at Tom to say, do we run into some issue where we're telling some, you can opt out because you can say you don't want it?
I I don't think we're, I don't think we're, I'm I'm not sure the model's valid. It, we have, if you build a new subdivision, you put a sidewalk, this is a retrofit, this is not a build.
We're talking, so you bought a house without a sidewalk.
And now all of a sudden the government's gonna come in and force.
And take, and take a few feet of their yard.
Because I'm gonna end up saying, we set a precedence before where we had another property that was gonna come into the town and we turned around and told them that they were gonna have to install sidewalks if they wanted to be included in the town.
Correct.
Now you're saying that you're gonna allow people to opt out that are existing in the town.
Correct, I don't see the two as being, I see apples and oranges.
I think you have apples to apples, you have one instance where you're saying, one group has to have it no matter what and the town's gonna force it on it. You have another group that you're saying if they wanna opt out of it, they can. I don't see a difference in the two in the sense that you still have residents.
Isn't the one you're talking about, Scott, that was new construction on Main Street?
No, what I'm talking about is the parcel property that we thought about annexing in and we told the whole entire neighborhood if they were gonna come into the town zone. Part of their conditions for coming in was that they had to have curbs and concrete.
You're talking about, uh, South I Seventy.
And so we turned around and lebied against them, you have to do that. Now you're telling me that we can let people out of it if they want to. They didn't wanna do it.
Yeah, well, I think we told them that at some point we might require it. I think that was all we told them.
But I'm just bringing up that point, is that we kinda have a, one group does, one group doesn't, and I think we're being selective.
Yeah, I don't, I guess I don't think we're being selective, I mean, basically the idea is when you design a community now, it's just like when you design a community now. Right, new construction, design a community, new construction, the roads have to be a better width than some of the old roads. We don't make the people widen their old roads to take their yards.
I got it.
And in some of the older communities, people come in and said, I don't want a sidewalk taking up my yard.
I understand. And South I Seventy, South I Seventy had said the same thing, I don't want sidewalks, I don't want gutters.
See, all I remember over there was we said, well, you may have to, you may have to do that at some point, I don't, of course, we never finished that, so we never actually got to it.
You know, I think it's, I think it's a public safety issue and it kinda transcends the cost. To a certain degree, I mean, we wanna keep the cost down as much as possible, but I do think that that just, this is public safety. You know, we have children walking on that area to school right now, is that correct on North Main Street?
There has to be a single child.
Well, they're Carroll County, so the bus would pick them up right in front of their house. Carroll County doesn't pick up at stops, it picks up at houses. All Carroll County children are required to ride the bus, they're not allowed to walk.
You're gonna tell me Rita Misra who lives three, three hours.
Her kids have to get on the bus, yes, her kids are.
To go to the middle.
You are correct. Yes, now they may, they may walk themselves, but they are supposed to ride the bus even from right across the street. Carroll County and Frederick County are completely different on that. Carroll County requires every kid come on the bus from right across, right, right across the street to get picked up, turned around, dropped off.
I'm sorry.
Scott?
So I'll I'll humor your side of the discussion for one moment and just ask the question. What criteria are you going to use such that if residents, half of them come in and say, I want it and the other half doesn't, or it's onesie twosie all the way down the chain?
I agree, it's a problem.
How are you gonna do it? Okay, we'll give you concrete, no, you're not getting concrete, you're gonna get concrete.
I agree.
You don't do that.
I agree with that.
So what I would suggest is rather than town coming down and throw the sidewalks in front of houses that people may not want. Why don't, I suggest, why don't we send a letter to each resident, see what they say, let the information come back and look at it next month? I mean, there's no.
I I think that's a very reasonable option.
And and deal with.
Particularly given how much money this is.
I just think that, as Councilman King and I have both said, when it comes to town safety, that is something that be, should be first and foremost in all of our minds.
I think you're looking at more than thirty houses, if you're using, are you counting ones in Conestoga?
The number, that's a rough number, don't use that number as.
You got a lot of people that live in Conestoga back there by Houston.
Go ahead, Scott.
I was gonna say, I wouldn't look at just the houses, look at the fact for just safety. Not people walking on the sidewalks, think about what sidewalks do, the purpose, between the rainwater, between the fact of keeping cars. You know, segregation between cars and bikes or anything else, I mean, there's car, plenty of cars I know that'll bump up against a curb and go back off the road versus if you don't have a curb, it'll slide right off the road. I'm not saying a curb stops it, but it does help. So there's a whole bunch of other factors just beside it is something to walk on.
I think Dr. O'Brien wanted to comment on this guy.
What are you gonna do if you get half of the people walking and half of the people not?
We'll deal with that then.
I I said, a worst-case scenario, you have this one wants it, the next one doesn't, the next one wants it, it's a checkerboard.
I'll tell you, the example we had when we went into that one community is the garages were up close to the street. All right, and they had very short driveways. And when people would park in front of their garage, they were parking across what was going to be our sidewalk. And of course, you're not allowed to park your cars across the sidewalks. And so basically, they came in and said, hey, you know, we bought houses, this is our property, we've been parking our cars there for years and now you're going to take our parking spaces from us.
But so I think the counter to that and just engineering thought is that the driveway is on top of the sidewalk? The sidewalk stops where the driveway meets because it dips down to a driveway, so therefore the sidewalk does not cross the driveway.
Now, if their truck, when they park nose up against the garage door.
They're, they're across the driveway.
It hangs on the street, that's a different problem.
Yes, but the driveway would go under it. If you, I mean, the garage, the the sidewalk would go under it. If you put in a sidewalk, it goes right under the rear tires of the, of the vehicle.
And I think by town code, you cannot block a driveway.
You can't do it, correct.
I'm sorry, a sidewalk.
Correct, and they were like, hey, this is our property, we bought the house this way, now you wanna take my parking space. Chris?
Ken, we pride ourselves in listening to the community. There's no need to pass it tonight, let's just send letters to each resident, see what they think and then discuss it next month. I mean, instead of us jamming it down.
I agree, I think that's a good plan, so.
I'm ready to go.
Yep.
Well, yeah, that's, I guess.
Just letters first.
Yeah, letters, letters, everybody, let's see what they say.
Yep.
Dick?
Dick Swanson, I heard the term stormwater management and if you put the sidewalks in, I, that would require some stormwater management remediation. And I just suggest to you that you also include this as, uh, something that's coordinated with the WRCC and as a project that would be part of our phase-one permit.
Right, so, yeah, that portion of stormwater management could be part of the, the eighty-twenty.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Which would include the engineering, by the way. There you go.
Yes.
All right, up next, Department of Public Works Vehicle Wash Recycle System. Barney, we got a proposal here from you for.
I'm gonna take this one.
All right.
Okay, town staff is seeking approval for the installation in, uh, the vehicle wash system. This was originally part of the, the D P W building that was built a few years back. But at the time, it was, um, in the interest of saving costs, we, it wasn't built. However, now the system is required in order to meet our NPDS permit. So, um, we, and also this, it consists of furnishing and installing recycle recycle wash system in a truck washing station. So they don't wash their trucks out, they'd wash it in this system. The town solicited bids from mechanical contractors and reclaiming system specialists during the month of March. Eight companies received big documents and, um, one in the amount of seventy-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars were submitted and accepted. This is within the budgeted, um, amount, which is seventy-five thousand. So, um, town staff recommends awarding the vehicle wash system project to McHenry Pressure and Cleaning Systems in the amount of seventy-three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Chris, do you wanna?
Is there a commercial facility that we could use instead? Why would we spend seventy-five K if there might be a local commercial facility? Cause it's seventy-five thousand to build this, then X amount of money for operations and maintenance from now until replacement costs. Do we look at using?
Should we just pay fees to somebody else?
Or drive it up.
Mount Airy Car Wash.
Yeah, Mount Airy Car Wash. Or if there's not, is there a public-private partnership we could work out? So we're not spending seventy-five K on something we hardly ever use.
That's something that was brought up to, by the Ridgeville Car Wash. They asked if that's something that we could bring our vehicles there. Part of the problem is, there's often times where we have heavy mud on not only the truck tires, but our backhoes, other, other types of equipment, so they're not gonna want.
They didn't want us.
The amount of stuff that we have on our vehicles, our tractors, our other things that we would be using.
Big trucks won't fit in there, will they?
No, they'll, they'll fit, they're big base. So Barney, the question, and please just clarify for everybody, they don't want, or did you, is that an assumption, or did you actually ask them and they said, "We don't wanna deal with that"?
We had the discussion about it.
Okay.
And, and it was, they were looking at trucks, just our pickup trucks coming in and coming in for a wash, and that would have been a problem. But when we're talking about tractors and other things that are coming in.
So you said you were gonna bring a backhoe in there and try and wash it off, they said now.
Your backhoe on a trailer.
Right, and we, we have a wash bay, it's already designed for a wash bay, has a dedicated drain that goes right to a dedicated sump, and that sump doesn't have a pump in it right now, so this would include the pump, running the recycle, sand filter, everything else that comes with that reclaim system, and.
Did, but Barney, did we explore the potential of working out some sort of contractual arrangement with a local business? Hey, look, we understand that your current system doesn't like all this mud, but i-if the town enters a contractual arrangement with you, you know, if it's twenty-five thousand dollars to upgrade your current existing facility to, for, to handle our mud problem, then we, you know, we could save fifty thousand bucks and then they, you know.
But I think that's what he said, they did have that conversation.
But did they, but they had, did they have the conversation and said, "Look, is there, if we can work out an arrangement where we will subsidize your upgrade, and then we have a contractual arrangement, so the town still saves money?" I mean, maybe they can't handle the mud because their systems can't handle it.
Yeah, and I understand, it's not a bad idea.
But then do we wanna fund them? I guess you're saying, if we sign a contract with them, they could guarantee a certain amount of money, they'll go out and upgrade their system.
Yeah, I mean, some, you know, seventy-five thousand bucks is a lot of money to wash a truck.
Well, there's, there's.
Put in a whole new bay. They don't have a bay big enough to handle a dump truck pulling a trailer with a bomb.
Right.
Yeah.
You couldn't turn it through that.
Maybe I'm looking at a different yawn, but I look at, it's another tool they need over there to do their job, and this is just another tool that they need to do their job over there.
There's also an assumption that, you know, our trucks actually rust apart, okay? I mean, that's what happens. They don't wear out. They rust apart from all the salt and all the corrosion, and that was why we designed this in the original facility. The idea is that the vehicles are gonna last a lot longer if, when the guys bring them in, in the middle of the winter, when it's freezing cold out, and you can't really go to Mount Airy, we can indoors clean our trucks off.
That's right.
Inside our bays, whereas Mount Airy is open, so when it's sub-zero temperatures, you can't go spray out there.
But, I mean.
Whereas we can spray in our indoor facility, get those, I mean, we actually have, we actually have oil pans rusted out, an oil pan rusting out.
Right, but is there some critical need that you've gotta wash your truck while it's freezing? Why don't you?
You won't get that salt off of, you won't get that salt off of.
You wanna get salt off as soon as possible.
The salt, salt eats metal.
Right, but the car's not gonna fall apart, the truck's not gonna fall apart in a week, you wait till it's above thirty-two, I mean.
I, I guess that's always an option.
How, how long did we have snow? Just saying. We had snow a long time.
That's a lot of salt. It's a lot of salt.
There was a lot of salt.
Can I at least ask, can I at least ask for the council to delay this for a month, go back to solicit one or two commercial facilities in town?
Well, I think we only have one.
Okay, solicit one in town to see if they're willing to enter in some arrangement. If, if, if we get waved off completely, fine. Can we ask them, "Look, if we, you know, enter in some sort of agreement to upgrade your facility, the town gets first right of use, whatever it is, to see if we can save a couple bucks"? I mean.
But I'm, I'm sitting here saying, I gotta believe it's gonna cost them a fairly good amount to upgrade their facility, which means we're gonna be spending this over a couple of years anyway, but I see Barney's finger up, or Barney's pen up.
I mean, if we have to add a bay, I mean, that's certainly gonna outweigh the cost of us putting in this equipment. But there might be a misconception that the, the guys do wash their trucks a lot down there. We did have an existing wash bay in the previous building, it didn't have a recycle, it didn't have a sump, didn't have a way of collecting that water and recycling that. Now, we used to be under a no-exposure permit up to last summer, and now, as of last summer, we were no longer to have a no-exposure permit, so that's why the NPDS requires us to have a wash bay. Now, if we did it somewhere else, that could meet the requirement, but I just don't see that that's gonna be cost-effective. This is a one-time cost over a number of years for the equipment. There will be some, some maintenance, but not, not a lot of maintenance, it might be something that we can just do in-house, and that's, I, I just think it's gonna be cost-effective for us to put that in.
Yeah, well, we're required to do this by government regulations now. We can meet the regulations by going somewhere else if we find somewhere else, but that would require us upgrading someone else's facility and taking all of our vehicles there to get it done. Have any of you guys ever waited, have any of you guys ever waited in line there for a while to get your car hose down after a salt storm? Yeah, so that we would also be paying our employees to sit there.
Plus the fuel.
Right.
Yeah, plus, plus, I don't think, I don't think they have a bay big enough for our largest truck.
Probably not.
I'm just thinking, and it's not a bad idea, but.
We said that, they said probably not.
The different answer than no. The, the turn bays that they have, I guarantee you, you're not gonna turn a big truck through that when you go into the bay and turn.
You gotta take a sharp turn when you get out.
Yeah, you have to make a sharp left.
Yeah, not with a snowplow on it.
No.
You're taking the curb out.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't, I think we'd end up building, building a building up there. I just, you know, it's, you're right, it is a sharp turn when you come out of there.
Yeah, when you come out.
If you've got the giant dump truck, I don't think.
It would be really hard to manipulate.
Yeah, I mean, I've been, I have trouble getting that thing around, you know, my big Sequoia, let alone, I can't imagine the big.
International.
Interna, yeah. Yeah.
Call for it.
So, well, I, I think we actually need a motion first, 'cause Chris started asking questions before we motioned, so I will move accept this.
Second.
I saw a second from Scott. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chris? Caboose location. Alright.
Mr. I Love Caboose.
I think that goes to the guy with the I Love Caboose's T-shirt on.
Somebody in this town has to be willing to look ridiculous. That's right, Bob does it. Anyway, I wanna start by introducing Diane Martin. She is the, uh, uh, thank you, Mannerly Community Fund.
Other side.
The director is.
The other side. These stay on, those go off.
The director of the Mannerly Community Fund. So all the fundraising and everything, right now, basically Diane owns the caboose through the community foundation in Carroll County, and we have a memorandum of understanding that once the caboose is restored, it would come back to the town and then be leased back, so that's kind of the, the way it would work. But Diane's gonna speak for a minute about the fundraising that's going on and the amount of money that we've raised. Thanks.
We've done a couple of fundraisers, and we've also been getting some various input from just town people sending in donations. You know, we have a post office box I run by every now and then, and surprise, there's two, three, four hundred dollars in there. So it's, it's been really nice where people have just been dropping money in. We're also getting money on, online through our websites and through the various fundraisers. We've had two larger fundraisers. We had a concert in the fall, and then we had a basket bingo in the spring, and we raised about thirteen thousand dollars through those two. Currently, we have a little over thirteen thousand dollars sitting in the caboose fund, so, and we also have about five thousand dollars in the Rails to Trails, so we're, we're sort of pairing them together. A lot of our fundraisers are raising for both of those since they're rabid projects. So the thirteen thousand eight that we have in there is set aside for preparing the caboose as a visitor center and other things that come up as we get ready to bring the caboose back to town.
Alright.
Yeah.
Got me wired, so. Put it somewhere up here. How's that?
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Alright.
Alright, that works.
Thank you. Diane's been working hard on this project.
Now she's got double mind.
That always defeated the purpose.
As have.
Yeah, the purpose of that would be to be in the light.
As have. Numerous people in this room are counting around, and we're gonna be showing a video in a minute, and there's eleven people in this room that are in that video, so you can count them as they, as they come through. So before we start through this, and, and believe me, I know it's nine-ten, so I'm gonna try to expedite, but we went to several different groups to talk about where this caboose was gonna end up, and two of the commissions in town, EDC and the Planning Commission, we went to both of those commissions and talked to them, as well as numerous nonprofits and businesses around town. The EDC came back with a recommendation after their last meeting that is not the location that we're gonna be proposing tonight, but they brought with them several good ideas that make the location that we have chosen our, our favorite location and, and much better than it was. And quickly, Bob and I both served on Parks and Rec from two thousand and six until he became a councilman. Numerous times, things came up at the Parks meetings, and were never communicated through our liaison to the council, and that's extremely frustrating and disheartening, and I would wanna commend Bob on the fact that he.
I was not the liaison then.
You were not. But Bob came to the Planning Commission meeting and communicated all the ideas that came out of the EDC meeting, and, and I have a lot of respect for you for that. That's, that was great of you to do that. I wrote a letter because we did not choose the location that the EDC brought up, and that letter is basically explaining to them that, how greatly I appreciate their efforts in giving us information, as well as giving them all a patch, a Rails to Trails patch. So I'll give that to you to bring back to them and, and thank them for us. As well, the Planning Commission, about half of them are already Rails to Trails people, and I see their chairman over here, so I have patches for all the people who do not currently have a patch. Yeah, and, and again, thank you to the Planning Commission. I have some handouts, I'll get these out real quick and dive right into this. Pull up two here. There you go. There you go, y'all can share, and may need one extra one here for my Danielle. Okay, so, the caboose showed up about a year ago, a little bit over a year ago, sitting on a farm down off of Pin Shop Road, and immediately, we started trying to come up with a name for it, and Mount Airy Caboose just led us to Mac. So we brought out some people from the CIA, that's the Caboose Inspectors Association, so the CIA came out to inspect the caboose, and they found out something that was really interesting. Next slide. Yeah, it's a girl. So, so Mac wasn't working anymore, so we decided that the caboose was gonna be named Mackenzie. So Mackenzie is our, our caboose's name. Next slide. Hey, so the idea behind our caboose being a young lady is that.
Okay, what makes a caboose a girl?
Well, I'm not gonna go back a couple of slides, but they were under their looking.
Okay.
And I, I can't explain it, we were just told what we were told.
I think this is a family show.
Here, here's truth of the matter. The caboose is a story.
Do we need to get a shotgun to keep the boy caboosees away? Is that?
We, if any engines show up, we may have a problem. But, but the, when we went to the community foundation in Carroll County, they explained to us that they had some people that could actually put books together and create a, a story to continue the story of our caboose, and, and so as, as we were going through this, we started thinking about that story, and that's kinda what led us to the caboose being named Mackenzie. So eventually, you'll have to wait for it, but the book will come out. Next slide. Okay, these are the groups that have been working on it. The Mannerly Community Fund, of course, all the Rails to Trails volunteers, they've been helping out. Mamza has been on board and put money toward the caboose as well, and of course, it's a Parks and Rec function. Next slide. Okay, so, I'm about to show you a video, and that's going to the end of the video, it's only three and a half minutes. It'll show the location of the caboose that we have chosen, and if you ever wanna watch the video again, it's crowdrise.com, which is a, a site that'll take you to a YouTube channel, crowdrise.com/Mannerly Caboose. And if, if we could show that video now, and then we'll talk a little bit more. How's it going?
That dreaded hour glass.
I think you got it.
Larry, did you bring your guitar?
We could play it, the, yeah. Now, only we have five. There it is, yeah.
She was a red hair, born in nineteen twenty-four. She roamed around the country, but she lived near Baltimore. She really loved to dance, but she settled to the back. Those men would try to leave her, and she didn't care for that. And she grew up tough on the rugged rail in the golden age of steam.
Yeah.
She's the queen of Mount Airy, the star of every scene. She's the queen of Mount Airy, she's everybody's dream. She was tough like a tomboy in the Second World War, bringing troop supplies to the port of Baltimore. When the war was over, she was humbled to the core. The engines got the glory, for Mackenzie got in the war. And she grew up tough on the rugged rail in the golden age of steam. She's the queen of Mount Airy, the star of every scene. She's the queen of Mount Airy, she's everybody's dream. While Mackenzie's red hair faded in the rest of her days, engineers no longer would let her out to play. They stuck her in a field on a rail that made her stay. No longer could she dance, she couldn't even sway. And she grew up tough on the rugged rail in the golden age of steam. She's the queen of Mount Airy, the star of every scene. She's the queen of Mount Airy, she's everybody's dream.
Alright, thanks. Feel free to clap. Alright. Go back to the slideshow real quick, so. Doing great. Okay, so, this is the location that, that we decided best fit what we were trying to do. It's downtown by the, by Bingu's parking lot. There were concerns about it, there were things that had to be addressed, and we're working our way through the issues, and, and have had a lot of input. But basically, we, that's gonna be a permanent home. The developer of the property wants it there, the businesses want it there, and, and while we may fine-tune it within that location, basically.
EDC, water and sewer.
Okay, water and sewer. We have a fog update. We have some businesses that are not responding to our third request, I think, for information, so we're checking into compliance and enforcement. It's a very simple operation. Fill out the papers, send it in, and we will help you get a variance if you're not, if you don't, if you don't need to be a part of this. Okay? Yes.
I have an update that the code enforcer will be going out in the next couple of days, and he has a letter with some forms, and this specifically states that if a business does not respond within, I believe, it's seven days, that they are subject to a hundred fifty dollar a day fine. So anybody who has not responded, who runs a business that is considered a food service enterprise, please respond to that. Our intention is not to fine people or raise money for the town on Mount Airy. Our purpose is compliance, but we still have somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen to twenty businesses that have failed to submit. So this is the last chance.
I mean, we've sent out three letters over the course of almost a year.
Aren't any of you here in the downtown?
Um, no.
Down, downtown, yes.
Yeah. I mean, 'cause, you know, yeah, 'cause I work here and I'm kinda in and out of, you know, my office is the other side of Main Street down the street, so I'm up and down Main Street all day. I'll be glad to pop in with something and, you know, say to the owner, "Hey, you need to deal with this."
Well, I think we definitely need...
At least, you know, the ones that are here that I walk to, 'cause I'm in and out of most of them all the time.
We...
They have food. I've been there.
We established the program, but the code enforcer is gonna go in there, so we have documentation of when he was in there and what he was given. You wanna go in and remind somebody?
Yeah, right. That's all I'm talking about doing. I'll just go in and say, "Hey, you haven't responded to this. The code enforcer's gonna be coming out. You need to do something." If you'd let me know who it is.
Yeah, I'll give you a list.
All right. Just an excuse for going and buying some more food.
That was, that was a major part of our last meeting. The monthly flow at the wastewater treatment plant is an average of point nine four four million gallons per day average. Now, if you look at the, at the big snow melt that we had, we, we had some snow and we had some rain, and that tells you that we are getting a lot of water, a lot of waste, no, a lot of rainwater into the, into the water treatment plant. And that's that inflow and insulator.
Yeah.
I know.
We've, we've got, we've got some money out there to work on. That's part of the approved way, the approved rain tax money we're gonna be spending from Carroll County. I know it's not rain tax money, but it is. It's just easier to say.
It's a fee.
Okay. Next meeting is on May the sixth, Wednesday, seven thirty at Town Hall. EDC, we spent a lot of time talking about the location of this caboose. We had a fiber optic discussion led by Mark Ripper from Carroll County, and he's, he's given us a lot to think about and a lot to decide. Our, our budget numbers were discussed. April the eighteenth, all day long here in downtown Mount Airy. Do not forget the Chili Cook-Off. We've got a lot of ad campaigns that, this is, EDC spends a lot of money advertising this event. So come on down. Our next meeting will be on Monday, April the twentieth, seven thirty at Town Hall.
Monday?
Monday.
Bob, any, um, any update on the, the idea of parking meters to move traffic?
Wait, you know, we're, we're kinda, we kinda just stuck that on the back burner. It's, it's not gone anywhere. We want, we're, we're actually discussing Center Street, and there's a lot of, there's actually a lot of stuff that we've got to look through.
Could, could, I just, if we could have EDC just comment on that one, 'cause I know it was an issue that's really, really important to...
Right, and, and they're, they're very, they're, they're very cognizant of the fact that we have to do something that's gonna turn these parking spaces around every couple of hours. You know, that's the whole, the whole idea behind meters and that kinda stuff.
Sure.
We've just had so much going on at EDC that this is kinda the thing that has not been getting discussed. Okay?
All right.
Those are my reports.
Yeah, 'cause actually meters, we have brought up meters on Streets and Roads a few times. It's come up, and we had a few meetings with downtown, a lot of downtown businesses in discussing that, so they may wanna kick it over there at some point. Our beautification, Parks and Rec. I was not at the beautification meeting 'cause I was busy watching Bob King get inducted into the Mount Airy Hall of Fame. Those clashed same night, so congratulations on that, Bob, but because of that, I was not at the beautification meeting. Uh, the next beautification, um, I know what beautification's working on right now is the rest of the signs, and, um, I, I know that that's, I think the mayor's requested that maybe we rebid out the signs that we already had bid for next year, so all that's kinda working its way through things. I know we had bids and we, we've had a sign company that's been working on the signs as they've come up, um, and the design is set. But last I heard, the mayor had asked for a rebid of the next group of signs, so I'm not sure where that's going.
The signs look fantastic.
They, they have come out very nicely, the ones that are in. Moving on to, so next beautification meeting will be the twenty-first, if I'm looking at my calendar here correctly. That'd be the, 'cause that's the third Tuesday, the twenty-first. Up next is Parks and Rec. Uh, just some highlights from the last Parks and Rec meeting. Obviously, we always discuss the caboose. We always discuss Rails to Trails. Larry kinda covered the caboose. A big thing coming up is we're moving back in towards movie night this summer. I think we, we may have some more movies. Uh, we went over some of the movies that are available. Um, I think we got some good ideas planned. Um, one of the kind of executive decisions we made is there was a question that came up. Some people had wanted to show some movies that were, um, like some nineteen seventies R-rated movies, and the claim was that, well, these are like current PG thirteens. And we just kinda made a decision, uh, nothing R. Um, you know, you have to, you know, if, if, we're not even gonna discuss that if it's R, no. PG thirteen and down, we can kinda discuss that, but probably gonna stick more to the PGs and the, and the Gs. Um, we're going to try a drive-in movie that's on the plan. So you'll be, you'll drive your car in, and one of those things where you transmit through your radios. We're, we're making plans to get a little transmit system.
So Wendy Ridge?
Well, we're thinking of doing it on the, on the hills, on the hill at, um, at Watkins Park. You know, where the, um, we'll just reverse it. Okay? You'll reverse it, and the cars will park in the parking lot, and, um, come in for a drive-in, so...
Does anybody have a station wagon that can move?
Hey, I got a convertible Corvette, guys. I have an old convertible Corvette. I'm looking for, to drag it out. And you can use your rumble seat. He's got the old Model A with a rumble seat.
Ken, I got dibs for you for the rumble seat.
So I think that's a cool idea.
I know Amethyst wants to get on as an administrator to the Facebook Mount Airy Movie Night.
Okay.
Facebook page. I found out just today that I think I'm an administrator on that.
Okay. Well, you're ahead of me. I didn't actually know we had one.
We, we do have one.
Okay.
I think I'm an administrator.
But we're working towards doing one of the movies as a drive-in, and we're gonna take that inflatable screen, and instead of facing it uphill towards the pavilion in Watkins Park, we're gonna put it on the hill facing down the hill of Watkins Park, and park on the parking lot.
Peter, I think we should make sure we got enough town staff to direct traffic, 'cause I could, this, this one's gonna be wildly popular.
We, well, we've also discussed some, some other possibilities. Like, if it's gonna turn out to be wildly popular, there's also, we've also discussed maybe talking to the fire company. And doing it on the hill, if you've ever been on the hill behind where the carnival is, there's a steep downhill there leading back down to the woods.
Right.
So if it turns real popular, we could talk about doing something like that.
You could just go on top of one of their trucks.
So we'll, so we're, we wanna go to a drive-in, and we've actually, I think we've actually, um, you know, budgeted to buy a, a radio transmitter for the stations. Um, Larry covered the caboose. Uh, we talked about the skate park, um, and we have a, uh, there's a, a five K plan that's in the discussion stages, um, and I will, I guess, leave Parks and Rec at that. Uh, next meeting for them will be the sixteenth. This is one of those odd months when Parks and Rec and beautification are not the same week. Normally, they're Tuesday and then a Thursday, but this week, this month is gonna be beautification on the Thursday, and then beauti-, I mean, Parks and Rec on the Thursday, and then beautification on the following, um, Tuesday. Uh, let's move on to P and Z and Community Task Force.
So can, can I suggest for the drive-in movie theater, Chitty Chitty Bang Man?
That would be good. We were talking about Raiders of the Lost Ark.
Let's, let's get some, okay.
Last movie I saw was Nutty Professor.
Um, for the planning, uh, planning meeting, um, since the mayor's not here, and I know the mayor, a lot of times, um, announces new businesses, so I'll just take the opportunity to do that. Um, a sign permit was done for Toy Exchange and Twin Arts Shopping Center, and I've been assured that there's a good possibility the Rock'em Sock'em Robot thing might be there if you'd like that. Mama Angela is, um, gonna do an outdoor dining area, so, um...
Oh, where are they gonna put it?
Um, they're gonna put, we're gonna, right up front. Take, take away some of the...
Parking spaces?
Right, yep, some of the parking spaces, and the planning commission and, uh, town staff...
Good idea.
Yeah, and they did some creative things with the parking, um, restrictions to, to, to allow that to happen. Um, next planning commission meeting, if you're interested in growth pressure on the town, especially again from Frederick County. Um, Frederick County is busy on their side of our border, allowing a lot of development, as you know. We've been promised an appearance by the Frederick County Traffic Planner, um, who looked at a lot of the growth issues, and, uh, one of the things that concerned us at the planning meeting was, on one of Frederick County's new planning maps, it shows Prospect Road as, it shows Prospect Road as, as a collector, meaning the traffic from the Frederick side, north of town, northwest of town, would come down to Prospect, and then Prospect would dump it on the Main Street. That's what they show as a collector. We all realize there's a problem there.
They haven't driven that road.
The fact that they show it as a collector and they're considering it, um, just shows you how much of a concern we should have about the growth and the impact to the town on, on Frederick. But anyway, um, the, the Frederick County Planner and the traffic, their traffic person will be there. The signed ordinance, uh, per Town Council request, that's been pushed off to June. In June, the town, planning will request a joint meeting with the Town Council to work through simplification of the signed ordinance. Um, on the OPE, um, the IDA, um, has appointed now Frank Dirdsbaugh as more or less their official representative. There's been some confusion about the zoning between the Town Planning Commission and the, the Independent Development Authority. So what I've asked for and I've now received is the IDA has appointed now a single point of contact to work with the town for zoning. Heather and I are going to meet with that, um, contact, go over their high-level needs. Those high-level needs then will be brought to planning, so planning can match it up with the existing zoning work.
Good. Maybe we can get moving on this. And Frank, Frank's, you can work with Frank.
Absolutely. And, uh, again, another plug to Commissioner Rothschild. He helped get that moving for us.
Good.
Uh, also, Bill Butts, our chair, is working on setting up joint planning meetings between the town, Frederick County, the town, and Carroll County. So we'll get a lot more synergy, hence my, you know, the request, because the synergy, um, between us and the county planning commissions is really, really important, especially as you've, you've heard tonight. Our concerns about Frederick potentially throwing more traffic onto our roads, and our roads are already challenged. Um, that's it for planning. Moving on...
Scott had a question. Was it a planning question?
It is a planning question and in the vein of EDC and IDA. Um, appreciate Frank, know what he does, but is there a conflict of interest because he's on EDC and he's an agent for Carroll County? So he's kind of working for both sides, economic development for Mount Airy, but he's also a representative of an entity that we're trying to do business with on the town's behalf.
And, and actually, Scott, more to your point, most of the, most of the members of the IDA, the IDA members are appointed by the Carroll County Commissioners. Most of them are actually either developers or have some development interest, except I think Dr. Scott, he's a dentist. But, um, that question was asked, and they've assured us that they're not looking to benefit themselves, but, but our fruit, so...
But as a, as a single point entity, you're telling me he's the point person, so now I'm...
He's not the decision maker, though.
No, he's not really, he's not really the point person. He's just, he's, he's just one of the members of the IDA.
Right, but to clarify, the, part of the confusion has been, we've had different people from the IDA, the IDA lawyer, and I, I took a step back and said, "Wait, IDA, just appoint one person who we can agree upon certain principles." But as, as Peter said, Frank is not the decision maker, but Frank will relay to us the IDA's high-level needs as a representative of IDA. But the conflict of interest question, uh...
I think, um, you know, I'd, I'd really like to not just render that opinion here in a public forum. I think that the proper channel through which that goes is a, a directive or a question to the Ethics Commission, probably for some sort... Yes, and they would probably consult with me on that. It, it, just off the cuff, I think that there are ways to ameliorate that problem. Um, you know, Mr. Dirdsbaugh could, for instance, refuse himself
Correct.
from matters on the, uh, um, economic development side that would bear upon the Harrison LaShere property, but um, I think that probably best to direct that to Ethics, and then probably Ethics would, would probably consult with me on that.
So I'd like to just make that recommendation.
I see the Ethics Chair nodding his head, so I think it's under, going to be undertaken.
Thank you.
All right. Chris, you had, uh...
No, no, that's good, thank you.
Task Force.
Good to call out, thank you. Um, Community Center Task Force, Community Center Task Force met last, this past month. Um, they're now in the process of collating, compiling all of the information that they, they have towards a report for the council, so that's one thing. Number two is they're, of course, waiting for the Town Engineers' Report on costing for concepts, large, medium, and small, as we passed before. And then, um, last but not least, and I guess I've been busy meeting with Commissioner Rothschild. Um, one of the things I approached Commissioner Rothschild with as well is the town's ability to get access to the county school facilities. Town staff had made queries before through official channels, and we found out that the town would fall, I guess, probably third place with trying to get access to Mount Airy Middle School gym, um, the elementary school facilities. Commissioner Rothschild has already set up a meeting that hopefully I'll attend, um, in April, um, directly with Steve Guthrie, who is the superintendent of Carroll County Schools. So Commissioner, Commissioner Rothschild is, is helping the town now facilitate access. We'll see where it goes, but it'll be direct access. That may potentially solve one of the needs we have for access to large facilities.
One, one thing that we always had, that, that they, that they don't have now was, um, Mayor always had a, a relationship with the Woodbine Rec Council. Rec councils get in first.
Right.
Okay, and since a lot of the mayor's sports, everything other than cheerleading, football, and, and baseball, were absorbed from Carroll County in nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, um, and those facilities were promised as long as the, as long as the sports stayed here, okay? The facilities were promised to Mount Airy, so... And the way that was done was through a relationship with the Woodbine Rec Council.
Okay. All right, well, I'll make sure we bring that point up as well. Um, the, the, the purpose of this meeting with Guthrie is in, you know, one of the challenges perhaps is, well, you know, we can't afford to build a gym, and so why replicate the acquisition of large facilities if they're sitting in town, and, you know, if we could get direct access to them, we could save a whole lot of money and then serve those needs. So, um, again, that'll, that'll, that meeting will be in April, and, and it, the, what we're doing here is bypassing the bureaucracy and going right to the folks that control this thing.
Give you, give me a little history on that, that, and this goes back, oh, Wendy was on the council, and I think Jim Holt was the mayor, and I think I was, might've been my first year on the council, 'cause, or shortly thereafter, 'cause there was an issue that came when they were building Pars Ridge.
Oh, yeah.
And the county wanted certain accesses to the Watkins Park properties, you know, to use all the fields and facilities out there. And we basically said, "Well, fine, but we want, you know, you tell us you're building this big gym at Pars Ridge, which is for us, put in writing that we're actually gonna get first shots at this, 'cause we don't want to, you know, you know, have you guys using our fields and then having, you know, giving all the gym space to Reels." The county wouldn't sign.
No.
We never signed the agreement to give them all the access, 'cause they would not agree, even though, even though going through the whole planning process with the school. And as I recall, we were actually, I actually went up with Wendy and met with Steve Guthrie, um, and he was not willing to give the town, you know, acts, you know, give the town teams, Mayor and those, first shot, like a rec council, to the schools here in the town. Even when we were holding out the swap of, "We will give you first shot at our fields during the days," when we're, you know, when the schools wanna use it. And, uh, my recollection is that agreement was never signed.
And, and, you know, again, both of the historical notes here are, you know, again, critical to us moving forward. One of the discussion points I've had, and, and we'll see where this goes, there may be the need, may be the need, um, to actually stand up a Town and Mount Airy Rec Council, an official Town and Mount Airy Rec Council, 'cause that might be the body that makes the arrangements with, um, you know, with the county. And to that point, and some of the ideas coming from Amethyst, who is the chair, of course, of, of, of our Community Center Task Force, some of the ideas, uh, that's been discussed, especially again, you know, from Amethyst, is you might imagine in the future, you might imagine in the future, a Mount Airy Rec Council. It, it has programs such as pottery, but the Mount Airy Rec Council sponsors the program, but the monies that come in get paid to one of our commercial businesses that actually executes the program. And then you might have sports programs that, that use, utilize the, you know, these large facilities. Again, just some ideas being kicked around, but, um, there's a lot of momentum behind some of this, and, and, you know, hopefully it's moving forward in a good direction.
I can see Bob waiting.
Having twenty-five years of, of this exact thing, okay, it comes down to this. Frederick County, Carroll County. Carroll County does not wanna pay for Frederick County kids to come play in their facilities. Frederick County does not, or, or vice versa.
Right.
And so it's, it's a constant struggle that once you get it solved, two years later, it needs to be solved again, and solved again. And it's, you, you can ever, what we try to do is to get Frederick County to recognize every kid that lives within the Mount Airy town boundaries as a Frederick County kid, and Carroll County to recognize every kid that lives within the Mount Airy town boundaries as a, as a Carroll County kid. And it works until somebody retires. And then it goes away, because nothing ever gets written down. It's, it's, it's all a handshake every time.
Right, and one of the things that, that, that the Community Center Task Force is doing is it compiles all the information available to it to document it and to start looking at recommendations and writing and processes to move forward. So, um, I'm optimistic that, 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 that we'll get there.
And who are you, when you get to the Parks and Recs people, Ken, I can't, I, the, the mind's gone Paul Dial, but I think Paul Dial is Frederick.
Yeah, Paul Dial.
And who is it in Carroll? Who is it in Carroll?
I'm not sure who it's.
Jeff, Jeff Daggots.
Jeff Daggots, yep, yep, you're right, you're right. Now that you mention it, I know the name, yep.
I will go, and Jeff Daggots will remember shaking my hand and telling me as long as the Mount Airy Youth Athletic Association offered basketball, wrestling, um, T-ball, all the things that Mayor did not do, that they would have use of these facilities. And he will, he will remember. He shook my hand, he said it. Danny A. Holt, Rocky, Rocky Mabry were right there with me. So he'll, he'll remember it, and then two years later, it starts falling apart again.
Right, um, and the discuss, the, this, this discussion is good, Bob. Um, the, the charter from the mayor and the Community Center Task Force, though, is unmet needs.
Right.
So, you know, our, our, you know, Mayor, Fort County, Luya, they meet certain groups of needs, so the Community Center Task Force is concentrating on unmet needs. Um, you know, people have expressed open basketball, volleyball, things like that, so again, that, that's the emphasis here, and um, potentially gaining access to the, the Mount Airy-based schools, if possible, would help us meet those unmet...
I just want you to understand that it's the most frustrating...
Just trying to give you a little history on where we are.
And that's why this is very important.
I am well-versed in this.
I see the tire tracks.
Yeah.
But, and that concludes my report, and again...
All right, recycling and sanitation.
Yes.
The most important...
Correct.
The most important commission at the table.
Thank you for the acknowledgement. So, um, sanitation, recycling ended up having a meeting in March. Um, discussed numerous things, uh, one of which has been in the paper a couple times, about the security cameras. Um, we have a security camera that is on pharmacy. Uh, Mary's been having some challenges with the camera, and so they've been working through that and trying to figure out if they can get, uh, a better video connection feed for her to be able to do what she needs to do. So that's something ongoing. Uh, I might end up going with, uh, Tom Nuff and go check it out and see what's going on, see if there's something that we can figure out.
Is it, is it a, is it a transmission range issue?
It's, it's a connectivity issue based off of the router that they have, no service provider named. Um, but the router that they have just isn't up to snuff for sending the signal over here, so some of the options we're looking at...
Oh, yeah, we're tying into their router over there.
We're using their router, so there's numerous problems.
All right, and when they, when they, they obviously didn't think when they put in their router, they needed to get to us. I understand that.
Right, well, if the power goes out, um, you know, there's nobody over there to reset it.
Yeah.
So we've got a dependency that we're trying to eliminate.
Yeah.
Um, so there's some options we looked at, wireless. We've looked at having, uh, laser direct line of sight um, to the building where she'd be able to get a higher feed out of it and actually have some viewable video.
Okay, good idea.
So that's something. Um, the budget, when it comes up, uh, one of the things I'll be, end up asking, which, speaking about budget, two dates, which I don't think were mentioned. On the eighth, we have our budget meeting, and we also have one on the fifteenth, which I will not be able to attend.
Without the mayor here, we miss all those announcements.
I, I figure I'd cover for him. Um, so in the budget meeting, one of the things that we, uh, will be asking for sanitation and recycling is, uh, adding some budget for the recycling totes.
Running out?
Huh?
We running out?
We are running out slowly. Um, we had some. We have about fifty large ones left, and then we have about twenty-five of the eighteen-gallon ones. Um, unfortunately, um, they only sell them in lots of like a hundred and six, so we're gonna have to...
It's an odd number, but...
Apparently, that's what they do, but we're gonna need to probably buy some, and we're also looking at, um, options for covering them. Right now, they lay outside in the weather, exposed, and the plastic becomes brittle going through the seasons, and we lose them.
Mine's outside all the time.
They'll, they'll get water filled up and everything, and, um, when they're sitting out there constant, they're not moving. They don't dry out. They get mold in them.
And sunlight degrades the plastic.
Well, I do that, but, yeah.
They're, they're not covered, so there's some options that we're looking at as well. Um, they're looking at having a shred and battery recycling date coming up soon, so we'll end up having people, if they wanna bring stuff to be shredded, or return batteries of all shapes and sizes. Um, they've been looking at that, as well as, uh, expired and unused medication. So one of the things that they were doing, I know that Wendy had done it a little while ago, of having a medication policy with the troopers come in. They've actually started looking at a drop box, and, um, this alternative has been used around where it's sealed, it's concreted in. People can just come and drop it in the box. There might be some logistics to it, like I wanted to put it in the police station, so it kinda drops and goes in, but they're working on it. Um...
Yeah, 'cause you worry about somebody trying to break into this box to get some drugs that are in there.
Right, so those are things that we're looking at, but apparently these boxes are like military-grade, so unless you're gonna hit them with something. Um, and the next meeting...
There's an idiot that'll do anything.
Yeah, the, the next meeting for Sanitation Recycling Commission will be on the twentieth at seven PM. And that concludes my report.
Streets and Roads. Oh, we got a quick question from Larry there.
If you could bring this back to recycling and sanitation, I got thirty-five tires that we pulled off of the trail that are sitting back in the woods right now. And we would love to recycle them. I know Frederick County does it once a year, and it's in September, but we need to get rid of the tires before Brian Johnson finds them. So, thank you.
No problem.
Just to make something clear, didn't you make a mistake? Don't you mean the camera works great? If somebody sees this, knows that camera's not working right?
So, no, the camera, the camera works, to clarify...
Works great, right? You've seen pictures already.
Correct. The camera works and all. As the newspapers have reported, they've tried to imply that it doesn't list all the problems with it. It does work. What we're trying to do is upgrade the capabilities of the camera so that we can be able to have high-resolution pictures of anything that's going on. So we can see details, but they want better details. They want it to be at a higher frame resolution, so think of going from VHS to HD. Thanks for the clarification. Don't worry, we've been watching you.
I guarantee you. Uh, we have a, we never had a meeting last month. Uh, we're gonna have our next meeting the twenty-third of this month, the next meeting. But, uh, one thing, we heard a lot of comments on this year was, uh, snow removal. Uh, I never heard any bad comments about snow removal in town anywhere. Uh, I think the guys did a great job pushing the snow and, uh, and, uh, throughout the town. Nobody had any negative comments about the snow removal.
No, I think they did good, especially when people don't move their cars off the road.
That's one thing I've always done very well.
Town Administrator, no reports from Monica. All right, Town Attorney report... All right, Town Attorney report.
Okay, I have to do this off my phone, because this ran out of juice, but I fortunately emailed it to myself, as I anticipated that. The, first of all, this'll all be on Rails Trails. Mr. Kofing of CSX has indicated that we should choose a date or give him a set of dates in the first two weeks of May, so that he will come to visit the town on the issue of the CSX property, which is a piece of the Rails to Trails that we are hoping to procure.
Before the election or after?
After, well, it'd be the first two weeks, he said, so I presume after. So, I wanted to run that date. I know Larry, it needs to be clear for him, but, you know, I'm sure that we'd like to have him meet with all of the council members, as well as the mayor, of course. Not necessarily in a joint session, but, you know, at least individually during his visit. I would envision that he'd be here from Florida for probably the two days. He'd probably fly in in the morning on one day, and then probably fly out the next. Our anticipation would be to take him to the property, let him lay eyes on it, probably meet quite a bit with Larry, get sort of a tour of not just the town, but also the town's plans for the entire trail, and how this property fits into those plans. And then, as well, a meeting with me, in the hopes that we might be able to negotiate or bridge a very sizable gap right now in the price that they're demanding versus what we've appraised the property to be. So, anyway, that's the purpose. Are there dates that I should, I know May fourth would be a bad day. Are there other dates in that first two weeks that are bad? That's May fourth.
I was thinking Star Wars, but, okay.
Are there dates I should not give him, or am I pretty well clear to tell him anything within the first couple weeks? We have some.
One of the three of us may not be here.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, I mean, the first week, I'm pretty much out, because there's the election that day, but the rest of the week, my daughter's graduating, so I'm gonna be out of town today at her college graduation.
So, we should look for that second week.
The second week is better for me.
The tenth Mother's Day, that's probably a bad day.
That's a Sunday.
That's a Sunday.
I know.
She has, she's done new business.
I'm assuming it's during the week.
If he's flying out, he may fly out on a non-business day. I'm flying with whatever time.
Okay. All right, then I'm gonna give him that second week and let him tell us when's best for him. I know with town staff, we have some other matters involving some of the litigation in that week.
We got a closed meeting on here, too, so.
Yeah. So, that's that. In terms of other Rails to Trails properties, we have into the possession now of the town, of the attorney for the owner of the VSP property, that'd be Rob Scranton, basically, or one of his entities. The temporary easement, we also have in their hands the memorandum of understanding for signature. That is the memorandum of understanding whereby he gives us temporary easements relative to his properties, if and when he receives the go-ahead to develop. These would convert, in effect, to permanent Rails Trails easements. I expect to have one more for the bank property, the Prospect Mills property, in his hand, hopefully, this week, and then there'd be just the Dow's Farm. On the town view, we talked about that, just Larry and Peter and I, and we need to get, you know, their signatures on the new contract, and also the temporary easement that they're gonna be granting us. We've talked about logistically how to go about doing that, and we hope to have that done. The rest that I'd have to report, I'd do in closed session.
All right.
Peter, I had one question about emails. I guess, reminder, right to everyone, the council policy after the election will be, everybody can press the town email. Question for Tom. If someone, citizen, and this is a, relates to Public Information Act requests against council emails, if someone in the public sends you a continual stream of email, sends a council person a continual stream of email messages, and some of them might be characterized as abusive, slandering you and things. If you, as a council person, set a filter so that, instead of continually being bombarded with emails that are easily construed as abusive, if you set a filter and those emails are automatically deleted, does that, is that a problem with email retention? How does this work?
Well, there are a couple of things that strike me. Number one is, is we do have a document retention program that we had to get approved through state archives. On certain types of documents, I don't know off the top of my head what it is for emails. But there is a schedule. Now, the problem is, what's being posed is supposing you receive this on your personal email or email.
He's talking about on his council email.
On your council email?
Yeah.
But he never actually gets it, because it's being thrown out.
Automatically filtered for really shut up.
It's automatically being filtered out, so he never gets it.
He doesn't get it, but it's somewhere.
But everybody else does.
The server sees it, server gets it, right?
Well, if everybody else is C.C., everybody gets it.
Right, so.
Well, we're not getting emails from their personal, of course.
No, but they're stored somewhere such that if we receive a P.I.A. request, do we not have the ability to access?
Well, that's a good question. If, if, no, if, when we go, what the question is, when we move our emails to the town server.
Oh, that's, there's no issue, because it'll be stored.
We have the building, and I asked you.
Well, even ones that you have filtered?
I asked you once before, Tom, if, if we don't have an email, if we're not using the town email, can we block an individual? When we block that individual, what it normally does is it sends it into our spam.
Right.
Okay, and so, after a while, it's just not obtainable anymore.
Correct.
It auto-deletes.
Spam auto-deletes fairly quickly.
Yeah.
That's right, and so, current, so I think what you're posing is, is that this email never sees our system, because it's never sent there.
No, you're seeing, it's deleted automatically.
Right.
It is copied.
Well, yeah.
It comes in through an inbox, the rule has to run.
I'm saying, it's not being preserved on the town server such that if we received a P.I.A. request, neither the town server would have the ability to pick it up, nor would you from your.
We have to ask Lee that.
Okay.
That is correct, that's the scenario.
The point is, on that, is that currently, we have no policy in place about the use of your emails.
Right.
And the length of time that you are required to keep emails of any variety, dealing with town business, on your personal, you know, system, or whatever. You know, the problem always is, is that, in my view, if a P.I.A. request comes in, I think that it's fair game to record, that, I think we have to produce emails that are on your system if they deal with town business. And are responsive to the P.I.A. request, obviously. You know, there's now a lack of uniformity, or a disconnect, shall we say, between what you're keeping necessarily and what we are keeping on the town side, on the town server, and what you're doing may not be consistent with our records retention program as is filed and approved by state archives. I don't read that what you do personally necessarily has to comply with what we do relative to the state archives. But I have said, I do think there should be some uniformity there, because when we get a P.I.A. request, you know, I think there should be some consistency there.
Right, and so, once, once the town is, and this is, you know, within the next month, we'll be setting this up, once the town is acting, or we're on their server.
Right.
We can no longer block, these citizens can't be blocked, so that when, you know, she's got a P.I.A. request of everything from January forward, she can go into everybody's box and just take everything from January forward, and it becomes much simpler for her.
Exactly.
I understand all of that, but we will no longer be able to block individual citizens that are abusive, that are bullies.
Right.
So, okay. And I, you know, we've all been in the situation where you're getting somebody just hammering on you ten times a day.
I don't know, well, I just ignore them.
Is there someone, you want me to look to see if there's someone that they can, you know, if something comes, if someone's harassing them, if there's some way that they can just avoid that person, but it go into our drive?
I think.
Right.
Well, in reality, the way it is now, if this person has it blocked, there's five other people that are getting the email, too, and that's, that's the way we work this, we, you know.
For now, let's just leave it alone.
Yeah.
I think that.
It's.
I won't even answer.
Well, yeah, let's just see how it goes.
Okay.
Let's see how it goes.
I think I get the answer.
If we have to, if we have to come up with a policy.
Move for the bills to be paid.
Oh, excuse me.
Second.
Oh, there is something?
Yes.
I don't see Debbie Parker here.
Public hearing for the budget, we haven't said it. We said the workshops last month, but we didn't set the public hearing.
Right after the fifteenth.
How about at the end of the fifteenth meeting?
What?
The fifteenth.
April fifteenth.
Oh.
We have a meeting on April fifteenth, right?
Yeah, the eighth and the fifteenth.
The public hearing can be at the end of that meeting, because we'll have a completed budget then.
You don't wanna have it in May?
I was thinking.
That's what we usually do.
You're thinking just before the council meeting?
The usual, but we can have it whenever you want.
We can do it before the council meeting. The only problem is, remember, that's a later council meeting.
You want to set the tax rate, too.
This is the set the chat.
Tax rates already been tackled. Okay, I guess do it, do it just before the council, remember the council meeting?
Whenever you want, Peter, we just never did that.
That's okay, I thought you were thinking of do it, we had to do it some other time.
No.
All right, just before the council meeting, however.
Eight-thirty.
Remember, the council meeting will start late.
That's right, okay, so.
Because the polls close at eight?
Yeah.
So, the council meeting's gonna, so, yeah, so it's, so I would say, eight-thirty for the public hearing, and the council meeting will start immediately thereafter.
Hard to believe, that's next month.
Time flies, we have to find.
The town council meeting, we'll have the public hearing, I'm sorry, eight-thirty?
Yeah.
And then town council meeting will start at eight forty-five.
As soon as we can, we'll start earlier if we can, because it's gonna be a late night. And guys, while she's bringing that up, maybe something we should consider is moving the election to a day other than when the council meeting is.
Oh, definitely.
Because we, you know, it just.
Definitely, because, actually, why don't we do that? I'd prefer we do that now.
It's a little late.
It's a little late.
Not the election, the council.
Charter amendment.
You can move the council meeting.
That's true, we could move a council meeting, although.
It has to be on the first Monday any month, because it's per code.
Oh, yeah.
Well, we have moved council meetings, but, but let's.
Just on that day, I can remember.
I'm talking for future.
For future.
You're talking about just moving that one?
No, I'm talking for future, we should maybe always have the election not on the first Monday of the month anymore, the second Monday, maybe, or, you know what I mean? Yeah, just, just, election day, just, maybe we should think about moving it. I mean, it was one thing when we had two-hundred people voting, and the polls were open from eleven to six, because they used to only be, they weren't open all day anymore. Now, it's an all-day event. I mean, the first bunch of elections, it wasn't until after two thousand that we expanded to basically an all-day polling.
Do we wanna consider moving the next council meeting?
Moving the council meeting?
Yeah, I mean, from a practical perspective, you're exhausted, plus, frankly, if you lose, you know, I think you probably want some.
Well, you won't find, well, you won't find out if, because.
Bruce will be here.
Yeah, but policy is, he will not announce the results until the council meeting starts.
So, you'll have to wait for the poll.
That is, that's my, that was my policy decision.
So, you get, so if you've been rejected, you get to do it live and in person?
You actually, you actually.
It always has been.
You were doing it live and in person before, now that we get the results so quickly.
You actually hold the council meeting, and you find out at the end what the results are. So, you're not sitting through a council meeting and you lost.
And we actually have to vote to accept those results, don't we?
Yes, I believe we do.
And in session, so the last thing on our agenda will actually be the election results.
I would not move this one, but I would seriously consider.
That's what I'm saying, for future reference, we need to restructure that.
Well, the only thing is, keep in mind, and we can certainly discuss this, but keep in mind, and I'll have to talk to Tom and look, if we have to accept the votes, and you're gonna have to be in session after the election.
Well, we could, we could, you know, have that one council meeting moved, too. I mean, we don't have to accept the votes necessarily that night.
Would that be like defeating the purpose?
You could just have a special.
You move the election, and you're gonna have a council meeting.
Yeah, you could have a special council meeting, in session, accept the vote.
Yeah, that's right. Special, yeah, we could have a special council meeting to accept the vote. That solves that problem for no other purpose than that. Yeah, we can work around it. I was just thinking about that today. We need to change the system.
It's a tough day if you're a candidate, buddy, starts at about five o'clock in the morning and goes.
Been there twice.
Goes there, goes till eight-thirty, and you're out in the sunshine. Some days it's sunny, and some days it's not. And staff's over, staff's over there.
Some people are there all day, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, and then those poor people working inside are there all day.
Yes, they are, all night.
But we've got it made now with our electronic.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big difference.
Okay, so, no complaint, Debbie, you heard her, she's got it made now, you heard that. She has it made now.
It's a blessing.
It's air-conditioned, it's hot.
Yeah, that's true, and heated, depending upon the weather. All right, I move that the bills be paid.
Second.
I got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Well, actually, I'm going to move that we adjourn to go into, to go into closed session in order to, Debbie's working at the paperwork, in order to consider the acquisition of real property and consult with our attorney concerning pending litigation. This is a new form.[1766.65]